Attorney, do we have anything to report out?
No final action, Madam Mayor.
Okay, in which case we will adjourn the special meeting and convene the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, July 9th, 2019. The clerk would call the roll, please.
Council members Aquino.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Howell.
Here.
And Gaylord is absent.
Okay, if you will join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And do we have any agenda update? I know we were talking about moving an item to behind consent.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. There is an update to condition of approval number 11 to item 7B, as well as multiple correspondence from residents and interest parties also with respect to the item. A copy of those have been provided to the council and they are also available to the public on the table at the back.
Okay, and I think we also had a request to do the joint city council Folsom Ranch financing authority meeting after consent. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and that is so that we have some financial consultants in the audience who don't have to stay for the other big items on the agenda. So, I have a number of speaker cards for item 7B, but I also have one from Arvin Singal and it doesn't say whether that's business from the floor or if it's the apartment item.
I think it's for the apartment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so do we have anybody that would like to speak to the council on anything that is not on the agenda tonight? If we have anybody, please get a blue card in the back of the room and bring that forward. I'm not seeing anybody rushing to do that, so we will move forward assuming there is no business from the floor, in which case we will move to the consent calendar.
I'll move adoption of the consent calendar.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. If the clerk will please call the roll.
Council members Aquino.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes, which moves us to agenda item 7A. Oh, sorry, we're going to do nine first, so we will adjourn the city council and convene the joint meeting of the city council and the Folsom Ranch financing authority meeting. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Council members Aquino.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Howell.
Here.
And Gaylord is absent.
Okay, do you have a presentation?
Yes, Madam Mayor and members of the council, Jim Francis, the assistant city manager. This item is a proposal to issue the special tax revenue bonds for CFD number 19 in the amount not to exceed $17 million. The council approved this CFD in January of 2016. It's to provide construction acquisition of certain public improvements, including water and sewer lines, water tanks, pump stations, extension of East Midwell, and subdivision improvements. The public benefits of this project include the efficient delivery of public infrastructure to the service area, savings in effective interest rates, and therefore reduction in charges levied, and the employment benefits from undertaking a project on a timely basis. The boundaries of CFD 19 are Bidwell on the west side, White Rock on the south, and Placerville Road on the east side. The total cost to construct all the facilities necessary to serve CFD 19 are $135.5 million, broken down by offsite infrastructure, the backbone infrastructure and subdivision improvements. We're proposing to issue Series 2019 revenue bonds in amount not to exceed $17 million for paying for some of these projects. The proceeds will be used to finance the acquisition of the facilities themselves to pay the debt service, reserve, and pay certain costs of issuance. The appraised value of this property within CFD 19 is $193 million. In compliance with city, it's in compliance with city policies. The value to lien ratio is 4.3 to 1. Your policy is to exceed 3 to 1. The projected tax burden is under the 2% or under. The one item I would note is that on Village 15, there is a proposal to rezone that from multifamily medium density to multifamily low density. If that were to occur, it would be after the sale of these bonds, but they will still meet the criteria of selling the bonds. There might be some repayment of other debt that's on the property, but they'll still be at or below the 2% tax burden level. By taking these actions, you're approving various documents, particularly the disclosure certificate and preliminary official statement to investors, and you're authorizing officers of the city and the financing authority to execute any and all documents in order to sell these bonds. So with that, with having the public hearing on this, and I'm sure all these people are here for this.
Actually, none of them are.
I thought this was going to be my moment, too, you know?
It may be your moment, but it's apparently not theirs.
But after the public hearing, I would recommend approval of city council resolution 10310 and the finance authority resolution 004, Folsom Ranch, F.A.
Okay, so with that, we will open the public hearing. As Mr. Francis mentioned, does anybody have any comments on any of these items? I assume, Steve, that we need to take these as separate items?
Yes, please.
Need to open the public hearing separately for both of them, or can we do that jointly?
No, combined.
Okay, so that would be for public hearing is open for resolution 10310 and resolution 004, Folsom Ranch, F.A. Is someone wanting to speak on this? No, just a drive-by. Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to adopt resolution number 10310.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Council member Aquino.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes. Do we have resolution, a motion to move resolution 004?
I will move resolution number 004, Folsom Ranch, F.A.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, clerk will call the roll, please.
Council member Aquino.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes.
Thank you.
No, thank you. So then that moves us back to public hearing, item 7A.
Madam Mayor, if I may ask that you reconvene the council meeting, please?
Oh, yes, good point. So we'll close the special joint city council meeting, Folsom Ranch financing authority meeting, and reconvene the council meeting.
Good evening, Mayor Howell, members of the city council, Lorraine Pajoni, our Parks and Rec Director. Jim kind of stole my thunder. I thought for sure everybody was here for the landscape and lighting district item. So before you tonight is the final engineer's report. Nothing has changed from the last presentation we made in May, which was your prelim. Just wanted to summarize the document for you. We have 29 districts. Eleven of them have escalators that are allowable for us to access during this time period. We have chosen to access three of those escalators in Broadstone, excuse me, in Blue Ravine Oaks, Folsom Heights, and American River Canyon North, number three. The escalator is a 3% increase. And there are two districts this year that we are not putting on the tax rule, and that's Silverbrook because there's capacity in the fund balance. And the other one is Union Square, which has an HOA that maintains it, so we don't assess any assessments for that. Some of the larger maintenance projects that will be taking place this year, we're going full steam on LED retrofits in the districts that can afford that type of technology changeouts. We're doing that. We're also going to be working with the Lexington Hills residents and a small subcommittee that's convened on actually changing the signage, the very kind of old and faded, outdated blue signs, entry signs at North and South Lex, and also Scholar, so we'll be working on that design and implementation. And then we're also going to be doing various streetscape upgrades of the 50 miles of trails that we have in the city. Twelve miles of those trails are within the lighting landscape district, so you might have seen some recent upgrades and changes there that we'll continue to do, and various other improvements in our mini parks. With that, there's no other changes when compared to last year's engineer's report. And with me tonight I have Arcilia Herrera from SCI, our consulting firm, and then also Zach Paris, who I'd like to introduce. He's in the crowd somewhere. He is the lighting landscape district manager, so he'll be my, he is my replacement. And so hopefully in future presentations, you'll be seeing Zach. So if you have any questions, let me know. That concludes my presentation.
Do you have any questions of staff?
I have a question.
Go right ahead.
The, I'm not sure why this jumped out at me, but American River North landscaping and lighting district does not seem to have any incidental costs for staff, whereas almost all the other districts do. Are we treating American River North specially?
Of course they're special. Actually, there's three districts there. So what we do is we, you'll see on a couple of the pages behind, we have American River Canyon North, which was the original. We have American River Canyon number three, and then we have American River Canyon number two. So what we do is we share the costs. So one district might pick up the incidental costs, another district might pick up the lighting costs, another district might pick up the schedule costs, and that's so that we're not, we're just sharing the burden. And that's the purpose of when those overlays were made, is to help supplement some of the costs that we couldn't cover under the original older districts.
Gotcha. And then one other question, just in terms of the carryover of funds from year to year, what is, what is your guidance in terms of how much to carry over beyond what might already be planned for projects in future years?
What we do is we really, there really is no carryover. Any fund balance that's left in a district's budget is allocated for future improvements. So we have what's called a maintenance and improvement plan for each district, so we know we have so many linear feet of fence, and so many miles of wall, and so many streetlights. And so we, if there is any fund balance, we map out, we have, you know, we're going to set aside 1,000 a year here, or 500 a year here. Sometimes we can't do the 1,000, we can only do 250. Sometimes we can't do anything. So that's how it gets done. If there's clearly a fund balance and a surplus, that's when we don't assess a district, such as the case we did in Silverbrook. We haven't assessed that district in several years.
So there isn't a reserve of any kind built into that? It's all identified for projects?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? So we'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak to either of these resolutions? Not seeing anybody, then we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion? I'll move resolution 10308. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Council member Aquino.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes, and?
I will move resolution number, there isn't another.
That's the next item.
Never mind, got ahead of myself.
No, there actually, there is another one. It's 10309.
That's why everybody's here.
That's the canyon.
Yeah, I'm not going to move that one, yet.
Sorry, okay. I was thinking it was two of them, so. All right, so then we will move on to item 7B. Which is resolution 10309, resolution to adopt a mitigated NAGDEC to amend the general plan use designation for the 16.96 acre project site, APN number 213-0060-025, from multifamily low density to multifamily medium density. Excuse me, and approve a design review for a 96 unit expansion remodel of the existing Kenyon Terrace apartment community for the Kenyon Terrace apartments expansion and remodel project.
Good evening, Mayor Howell, council member Steve Banks, Community Development Department doing the presentation this evening. The request before you this evening is a request for approval of two entitlements, a general plan amendment, as well as designer view for the remodel and expansion of the existing Kenyon Terrace apartment community. The apartment community is located in the northwest portion of the city, as shown on the vicinity map before you. And this is a little more cooler view. It's an aerial view showing the existing project site with the surrounding residential A little bit of background, this apartment community is a little over 30 years old. It was originally approved back in 1984, 1985, constructed in 1987. The existing apartment community includes 200 apartment units, one and two bedroom apartment units, distributed among 18 two-story apartment buildings. There's also a community clubhouse, as well as numerous site amenities, including a swimming pool and multiple tennis courts. Some of the key details associated with this project this evening, the applicant, as I mentioned, is seeking approval of a general plan amendment to change the general plan land use designation from multifamily low density to multifamily medium density, and this request is being made to accommodate the increased density on the project site. In addition, the applicant is seeking approval of designer view for a review of the site plan, as well as the architectural details associated with the project. The new apartment buildings proposed with this application include 96 new apartment units, and those will be distributed among eight new buildings. These are two and three story buildings. Primarily one and two story units will be provided. 88 of the units will be one and two story, one and two bedroom units, and the remainder three bedroom units. The applicant is also proposing to demolish the existing clubhouse and construct two new clubhouse buildings. Those will be single story. They are also proposing to remodel the existing 18 apartment buildings on the project site to match with the design of the new apartment buildings. A new maintenance building and storage facility is being proposed at the rear of the site. Numerous site improvements are being proposed, including a number of new drive aisles, additional parking spaces, new trash enclosures, as well as other site features. Notably, the applicant is proposing a number of sustainability features and energy efficiencies with the proposed project, including solar panels on the new clubhouse buildings, as well as solar panels on one of the apartment buildings. They are also proposing to install electric vehicle charging stations on the project site, and implement an electric vehicle car sharing program whereby residents can utilize two electric vehicles to drive to various locations. And lastly, the applicant has submitted a voluntary housing program to provide 10 affordable housing units within the apartment community. I've listed a number of the factors that staff considered in evaluating this project, and I'll touch on the key elements of these evaluation as I go through my presentation. This is the site plan that was submitted by the applicant. As you can see in the top of the screen, you can see the existing apartment community, which includes 18 apartment buildings. The proposed project includes eight new apartment buildings. Five of those buildings are located along the frontage of American River Canyon Drive. Three of those buildings are set back a little further. The new community clubhouse buildings are located in the northern portion of the project site with the new pool and amenities. I would note that there are two existing driveways into the apartment community, and that there are no changes proposed to either of those two project driveways. In terms of the general plan amendment, as I mentioned, the existing general plan land use designation is multifamily low density, which accommodates seven to 12 dwelling units per acre. The existing apartment community has 11.7 units per acre. The applicant is proposing to change the general plan land use designation to accommodate 17.5 dwelling units per acre, which would fit under the multifamily medium density designation, which allows 12 to 20 units per acre. In terms of the zoning, the existing zoning for the project site is residential multifamily. Apartment communities are approved land used within the existing zoning designation, so no change is necessary to the existing zoning designation, as apartments are permitted. In your staff report, there are a number of general plan goals and policies listed, and I've just listed a few of the more important goals and policies in my mind and how this project conforms to those policies. The first deals with efficiency through density. The second general plan policy talks about renewable and alternative energy generation systems, and I just talked about the electric vehicle charging stations, the car sharing program, as well as the solar that are being proposed with the project. The third policy, policy 4.1, talks about private reinvestment in residential neighborhoods and communities. And this project is certainly investing many millions of dollars, not only in the new apartment buildings, but the existing apartment buildings. And lastly, policy 3.1 talks about encouraging a mix of household incomes, and this project is proposing to provide affordable units within the community, which satisfies this general plan policy. Traffic access and circulation was obviously a key concern of city staff as we reviewed this project. A traffic study and subsequent updated traffic study were prepared for this project. The studies looked at 12 study intersections. Those intersections are located primarily along American River Canyon Drive and Oak Avenue Parkway. The studies determine that this project will generate 705 new trips on a daily basis within the AM peak hour. The project is expected to generate 51.
Excuse me, Scott, for just a second. I'm going to ask everybody to be respectful of everybody that speaks tonight. We may have differences of opinions regardless of what that is, but our staff is going to be allowed to speak, as are all of the people here tonight that have submitted speaker cards. So we're going to behave. We're not going to boo, we're not going to cheer, we're not going to make fun of anybody that happens to disagree with your opinion, and I ask that of all of you respectfully. Sorry, Scott.
So in terms of the AM peak hour, the project is supposed to generate 51 AM peak hour trips. So that's 51 trips between the hours of 7:00 AM and 9:00 AM. In the PM, the project is expected to generate 71 trips. So that's 71 car trips between 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM. The city's threshold for a significant impact is if a project causes more than a five-second delay at a study intersection. This project does not cause that level of delay at any of the 12 study intersections. Most of the delay is caused by this project range, the 1.7, 1.8, 2.3, 2.4 second range. So we did not identify any significant impacts based on that five-second threshold. That being said, under cumulative conditions, which is in the year 2035, when the product, year 2035 with the project, the project does result in a level of service decline at the intersection of Oak Avenue Parkway and Baldwin Dam Road. And that level of service changes from level of service D to level of service E. The applicant is required, there's a condition of approval included with this project, to pay a fair share contribution towards future roadway improvements on Oak Avenue Parkway to address that situation. The city is currently in the process of looking for funding for improvements on Oak Avenue Parkway that would address not only the Baldwin Dam intersection, but also the Folsom Auburn Road intersection. With those improvements, which include widening the roadway from two to four lanes per the general plan that was recently adopted, the level of service at the Baldwin Dam Road intersection improves the level of service B, and the Folsom Auburn Road intersection also improves dramatically. So there is a condition of approval. The applicant is required to pay their fair share contribution towards those ultimate improvements. That being said, whether this project is approved or denied, those improvements will still move forward once the city identifies that funding source and goes through the design process.
Steve, where's that, the widening to four lanes, where's that, where does that begin? I know it ends at Folsom Auburn.
So here's an exhibit showing the extent of the widening. So it would start just west of Baldwin Dam Road to the west, and then it would go all the way to Folsom Auburn Road, and then we also have some improvements on the other, on the east side of Folsom Auburn Road. So that's, that's the extent. The actual design details have not been, have not been ironed out yet.
Okay, and otherwise, because I know this was discussed in the, the general plan update, when are we otherwise looking at putting a signal at Baldwin Dam? Because I think that, that would resolve a lot of the existing problems at Baldwin Dam.
I might look to my right to our public works director, see if he might.
So part of those improvements that Steve's speaking about, we've already had on the books to install a signal at Baldwin Dam Road, as well as intersection improvements at Folsom Auburn and Oak Avenue as part of this project. So it would be, as soon as we get identified funding, we'll be moving forward. We applied for active transportation grant through SAGCOG this year. We didn't make the cut, but we will, we will continue to, you know, apply for that type of funding to, you know, fund this project.
What about the possibility of installing that light sooner rather than later, as you and I discussed about a month or so ago with that temporary signal equipment?
There's a number of options we can do there. We could do a temporary signal, as we discussed, whether it be a span wire signal, or the issue would be installing a signal at the ultimate configuration of a four lane road would set those signals quite a ways back from the existing roadway. And we don't want, we don't, we're not in the habit of kind of throwing money away for a temporary improvement, so we wouldn't install those.
I totally agree with you, but regardless of what happens with this project tonight, there's already a problem at that location.
There is.
And it's predominantly, I have to believe that stop sign was originally installed to allow people that are coming out of Baldwin Dam Road to get out of that neighborhood, but there's so few houses in there to make every single person that lives in that whole neighborhood stop at that stop sign, to me is kind of crazy.
Yeah, and we've investigated a couple of options there, one being the temporary signal. It is a perfect location for a roundabout to handle that minor leg of Baldwin Dam Road. I didn't think it was that funny, but so.
And I thought we all agreed we were going to stop doing that, but go ahead.
Yeah, so a roundabout is an optimal location as an, either a permanent improvement or certainly an interim improvement until which time we identify the funding to, you know, move forward with this project.
Okay. Sorry about that, go on.
Right. Landscaping was a big topic discussed at the planning commission meeting in May. The proposed project is eliminating 102 trees from the project site. None of those trees are considered protected trees. Protected trees being oak trees or tree, or street trees located along the frontage of the 12 and a half foot frontage of Folsom Auburn Road. The applicant is proposing to plant 279 new trees on the project site, so the net will be a 177 increase in the number of trees on the project site. Of note, the product today is landscaped, 62% of the product site is landscaped today. With implementation of the project, 48% of the project site will still be landscaped. And certainly from a water usage perspective, we expect the water usage with the landscaping to decline significantly. If you've obviously been to the project site, you've seen the massive grass area along the frontage of the project. Most of that area will be removed and replaced with drought tolerant plant materials. In terms of architecture and design, as I mentioned, the applicant's proposing eight new buildings, two new clubhouse buildings, a storage building, and also the remodeling of the existing buildings on the project site. The new buildings have a modern design that's been designed to blend in with some of the design elements that you see on the existing apartment buildings on the project site. In terms of the existing apartment buildings, the applicant's replacing some balconies and porches, also implementing a new color scheme and repainting the fascia and gutters, again, all with the intent of bringing it up to date to match the design of the new buildings. The architect is here this evening. Do you have any specific questions about the approach, the architecture and design of the new buildings or the, or the existing buildings? And I'll walk through some renderings with you now. This is a two-story building. This is showing the three-story building. There are tuck on their garages on a number of, number of the units. This is the clubhouse building, or one of the clubhouse buildings. This is a view of the pool area. This is a view showing the proposed buildings on the left in the foreground, and to the right, these are the existing apartment buildings, just to show how the new buildings are attempting to blend in with the existing buildings. This is another viewpoint showing the existing and proposed around the pool area. This is a perspective from the applicant, showing one of the buildings are built just from a massing perspective, as viewed from American River Canyon Drive, looking to the northwest. This is the perspective you might see.
How close is that image to the high point of the road, right beyond the azalea bushes?
That's a good question. I might defer that to the applicant who provided this.
Thank you.
Who provided this image. And this is the opposite view, looking to the southwest, again, showing the proposed apartment buildings in relation to American River Canyon Drive. We had the applicant's engineer provide us some data regarding the elevations of the buildings in relation to the sidewalk along American River Canyon Drive. And in the boxes here for each of the five buildings closest to American River Canyon Drive, and I'll walk through from left to right. Building eight, as viewed from the sidewalk on American River Canyon Drive, will appear to be 21 feet 8 inches tall. That building is set back 20 to 60 feet from the property along, along American River Canyon Drive. The next building will appear to be 12 feet 5 inches tall, 8 feet. The next building will appear to be 12 feet 5 inches tall, 8 feet, 10 feet, and 10 to 20 feet for Building Four. Again, the setbacks from the property line are listed below that figure to give you a sense of the massing of the buildings. And looking at the architecture and design, the city has design guidelines for multifamily development, and I've listed some of the design principles that the staff considered in reviewing the architecture and design, as well as the planning commission, and we felt that the, the applicant did meet many of these key design principles with their design. These are also some of the specific design recommendations in terms of design, materials, and colors. And again, the city staff and the planning commission believe the applicant meant the intent of the specific design recommendations found in the Design Guidelines for Multifamily Development. As I mentioned earlier, the applicant has submitted a voluntary affordable housing proposal that would provide 10 affordable housing units on the project site. Those units would be deed restricted for a period of 55 years. Seven of those units would be available for low-income households, with three of those units available for very low-income households. Moving to the chart at the bottom of the screen, I thought I'd give you a sense, well, what does that mean in terms of monthly rent for someone who qualifies for lower very low income unit? The market rate ranked currently for one-bedroom units in this apartment community is around $1,500, give or take. The low-income unit, their monthly rent would be $1,238. The very low-income would be paying around $736 a month. And this assumes a one-bedroom unit with two people in that unit. And I've also listed the qualifying household income next to that on the left, and it gives you a sense of the incomes that are required to qualify for those specific units. This is some information that you've probably seen before from SAICOG, from Greg Chu. It just talks about the regional housing needs allocation provided by SAICOG and the state, and where the city stands in our current period or cycle with regards to the housing needs allocation, and obviously we've got some, some work to do here, and so we think the provision of 10 units certainly puts us in the right direction with providing more affordable units in the community. In terms of community outreach and public noticing, the applicant sponsored a number of events. Two of them were quite a while ago. One was more recent, in March. I've also listed the city's required public noticing requirements regarding the project. We did receive a number of concerns from residents at the planning commission meeting and prior to the planning commission meeting, that there was not sufficient time for them to review the project and comment. But, but I would note that the city met the required noticing requirements. For this particular meeting this evening, the city sent out notices to all residents who own property within 300 feet, but we also sent emails to all residents who contacted the city expressing interest in the project. And those notices for this meeting were sent out at the end of May, on May 31st specifically. The applicant also put a project identification on the sign, on the site in early May as well. The city, as you've probably noticed by your packets this evening, has received quite a few comments, probably in the neighborhood of 50 to 60 comments, not 40 as listed on the screen here. Residents have a number of concerns regarding the project, and you've probably read through the packet and are well aware of the concerns that have been voiced. And again, I've listed a majority of the concerns we've seen through the verbal testimony, as well as the letters we received. Initial study and mitigated negative declaration have been prepared for this project. There are some nominal mitigation measures with this project. There was nothing significantly identified in the document. The mitigation measures that were identified are included as conditions of approval for this project. And the consultant who prepared this document is here this evening. If you have technical questions about that document. As I referenced, the planning commission reviewed this project at its May 15th meeting. Fifteen people spoke at the meeting. Majority of those people were in opposition to the proposed project. There were a couple of people who spoke in support of the proposed project, and again, I've listed the, the reasons for why people opposed the project and why people supported the project. The commission engaged a fairly lengthy debate regarding a number of topics, architecture and design, the location and orientation of the buildings. The onsite landscaping was of concern. The commission wanted them to ensure that the buildings would be screened effectively from American River Canyon Drive. The commission was concerned about off-site landscaping in the parkway area along American River Canyon Drive, traffic and parking. Commission was supportive of the affordable housing proposal, really felt it met, met a city need.
Steve, what was the discussion at, at planning about traffic and parking?
There was some, some, just some general discussion about traffic impacts the project might have on, on Oak Avenue Parkway specifically was, was the main discussion.
And what was, so what was, that's, so the traffic issue is different from parking, so what was the parking issue?
There was just questions about the number of parking spaces required and the number of parking spaces provided, and we explained that this project is far exceeding the parking requirements established in the municipal code. And in fact, the parking ratio is actually increasing with this project from what it is today.
Okay.
So it was, it was, it was a discussion. We, we informed them about the parking situation and went through the traffic study with the commission. But they were interested in what was going on on Oak Avenue Parkway specifically, and Baldwin Dam Road and Folsom Auburn Road and those, and those congestion issues that currently exist.
Okay.
And the commission was concerned about the public notification process and wanted to ensure that people had enough time to comment on the proposed project. The commission, following this discussion, the commission added two new conditions of approval, which are included in your packet. Condition number 63 required the applicant to enter into good faith negotiations with the American River Maintenance Association for the maintenance, maintenance of the parkway area that's not fronting the project site. And it's my understanding that the applicant has been working with the association subsequent to the planning commission meeting, and that agreement has been reached, where the applicant will be contributing towards the maintenance of the parkway area. So there is, again, there's a condition number 63, and it sounds like that's been satisfied. Well, let the applicant follow up on that particular condition of approval. The commission also added condition number 64, asking that additional landscaping provided along Folsom Auburn Road to better screen the apartment buildings. So condition number 64.
Folsom Auburn or American River Canyon?
I'm sorry. American River Canyon Drive.
Those would be some really tall trees.
Those would be some tall trees. So there's a condition of approval that the applicant provide in additional and enhanced landscaping to better screen the apartment buildings from American River Canyon Drive. The commission voted to recommend approval of the project to the city council. Four members voted to approve the project. Two members voted to deny the project. One member was not present. And I'll finish off just with some site photographs showing the existing situation. These photographs have been taken within the last month or so. This is a photograph of one of the existing apartment buildings. Another of the existing apartment buildings in the, in the carports in front of them. This is a view from the southerly project driveway, looking north, and it gives you a good sense of the gray change between American River Canyon Drive and the project site. This is a view looking south from the northern project driveway, and again, you see the expanse of turf and grass that's currently present. This is a view again back into southern project driveway, just showing the parkway or the landscape buffer on both sides of the road. Again, the opposite view from the northernly project driveway, showing the existing vegetation along the frontages. This is a view looking from the subdivision across the street near the northerly project driveway, and this is the view that currently exists from this location. This is a view, it's almost midpoint, looking into the apartment community from across the street. And this is a view from the southerly project driveway. Then turning around, this is your view towards the surrounding residential neighborhood. This is near the northerly project driveway. This is near the center of the apartment community, and this is near the southerly project driveway. And before I close out, I would mention that you do have an additional document before you this evening. There's a proposed modification to condition of approval number 11. Condition of approval number 11 requires that the impact fee be paid to the Folsom Cordova Unified School District. This project is not located within the Folsom Cordova Unified School District boundaries. It's actually located within the San Juan Unified School District boundaries. So the proposed change, changes that language, so the impact fee shall be paid to the San Juan Unified School District. And with that, staff, word to recommendation of approval from the planning commission, I'd be happy to address questions. Other staff members are also here. The applicant does also have a short presentation, if you'd like to hear that first before you go into your questions.
Does anybody have any questions before we let the applicant come up?
I have one. What, from the existing parking that's on the site, across that grassy slope to the roadway, what is that elevation change? Because it's deceptive because of the depth of it right now?
It, it varies, it varies across the site. I'll let the, maybe the applicant's engineer can address that, but I think in some places it's probably a 40 to 50-foot drop, in some places it may be closer to 10 to 15 feet, where the driveways are on either side, but it varies.
Very good.
And that's why you saw the difference in the, in the building height from the street.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is your forward, that's your back. There's your pointer. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Roy Brewer. I'm an attorney with the firm of Brewer-Lofgren. Here tonight, representing the applicant, Capital Valley Investments and the Ezra Lo Company. Joining me tonight, just in case you have any questions of the principals or our consultant team, starting here, Mr. Sid Paul, Vice President of the Ezra Lo Company. Next to him, Darren Horning, Principal with Capital Valley Investments. Next is Peter Berger, Architect with MVE Architects. Next, Todd Trzynka, a planner and a traffic project manager for GHD. And last, Scott Robertson, Licensed Landscape Architect, also with GHD. What I'd like to do tonight is offer substantive and fact-based responses to comments we have heard or seen or read, received either before, during, or after the planning commission meeting on May 15. And I'm going to do that using a number of slides. I'll be as quick, quick as I can, but there's a lot of material to present. I'm going to start with the aerial photograph of the site, just to show existing conditions. You'll see the existing apartments and the existing line of sycamore trees as they front onto American River Canyon Drive, and I believe this is the Oleander Hedge here. So next, we've added to that slide, superimposed the proposed new buildings. We've kept, of course, the existing trees because they will be retained as the project is, is developed. One of the issues that's been raised has been trees. The Arbus report included in the secret document inventoried 183 trees on site. And in the document, the inventory showed in bold red, those trees that needed to be replaced or removed or treated. So they are diseased trees, and treatment might be trimming branches or adding additional mulch. But there were 55 trees, as I recall, that were identified in the report as needing to be removed or replaced. And those are identified on this exhibit in the red crosshatch circles. So these trees are to be removed. Again, none of the trees along American River Canyon Drive are to come out. Now, in addition to that, on this exhibit, we're going to add, not 279, Steve, that number increased since the planning commission meeting because of the planning commission condition of approval that we add additional landscaping along American River Canyon Drive. So instead of 279 trees, we're actually adding 338. So the number of trees on site increases from 183 to 413. And as the condition of the planning commission requested or required, a number of those trees are in fact along American River Canyon Drive to provide additional screening from the street to the project. And even after the buildings, the new buildings, the proposed buildings are constructed, as Steve's mentioned, 48% of the site is retained as open, in green open space. One of the issues, other issues addressed, is the elevation of the buildings and what would be visible from American River Canyon Drive. So this particular exhibit, all the exhibits, by the way, are based on a topo map that, that expresses elevations in feet above sea level. So the elevation of the sidewalk is expressed that way. The elevation of the buildings by the architect is expressed that way. So we can see the difference. We can calculate the difference, so we can show you what the appearance of the buildings will be from the sidewalk. This is showing Building Eight. And as Steve's exhibit showed, it's, it's an angled building. It is 60 feet from the sidewalk at its farthest point, 20 feet at its nearest point, and the highest point above the sidewalk is 21 feet 8 inches. The same, this is Building Four, which is at the northern end of the, of the site. Building Four is also 60 feet back from the sidewalk at its farthest point, 25 feet at its closest, and the building height here varies between 20 feet and 10 feet, because at this point, American River Canyon Drive begins to slope down. So the height difference from the sidewalk varies by as much as 10 feet. Building Six, which is pretty much in the middle of the site. You can see that on the interior of the project, it reflects three stories, two stories of apartments and one-story garage underneath. But because of the slope of the site here, by the time you get to the sidewalk here, the elevation of this building is 8 feet above the sidewalk. If you add this clear-story window, which allows natural light to come into the apartments, that adds an additional 5 feet. But at this face right here, this elevation is 8 feet above the sidewalk. If you add the clear story, it's additional 5 feet, so it's 13 feet. My understanding is that certainly 8 feet and even 13 feet is lower, is a lower vertical profile than a typical single-family home, which I understand might be from 15 to 18 feet. So this building is lower than, presents a lower vertical profile along American River Canyon Drive than a typical single-family home. This particular diagram shows Building Three, and it is completely obscured from view from the sidewalk because of Building Six. And this particular exhibit also reflects an existing sycamore tree. So it begins to give you a sense for what you might see if you're on the sidewalk here, or even across the street, looking west, what you might see of this building. Now I'm going to, going to present a panoramic view. I can't do it all on one slide because it's too wide. So I'm going to show, this is Building Eight, so it's at the southern entryway, Building Seven, and then a portion of Building Six. This is an existing building. If there were no trees on American River Canyon Drive, and you were across the street looking west, this is what you would see. Then traveling north, the rest of Building Six, Building Five, Building Four, Building One, which is in the interior of the site, you would see some of that. But again, this is, in the event there were no trees whatsoever, this is what you would see, either from the sidewalk or from across the street. Now we're going to add the existing.
Can I interrupt real quick? Because many of us on this side cannot see what you're discussing. Please. Will this information be made, be made for us online?
Basically, yes, it will be online because this meeting is being telecast online as we speak, and it will be available on the city's website. Should be tomorrow, and if you want to watch it, I think on Thursday night on Comcast or Saturday morning on Comcast.
Will it be time to review after the applicant gives it another try?
No, it's anticipated that the council will be making a decision tonight.
And other combinations we make so that others here see the information, knowing that the vote is imminent?
The, the meeting is, is being telecast right now online, so if anybody in The, the meeting is, is being telecast right now online. So if anybody in the back of the room has their phone and you want to look at those exhibits online, or you want to come around, I'm not sure how we accommodate the number of people. Please don't, I'm trying to answer the one question, and we're not going to have a bunch of people yelling from the audience. So I'm not quite sure how we accommodate that, other than we wait a minute and let the, the number of people on one side of the room move to the other side of the room. So, anybody want to do a little shuffle, go out the door and come back in There is, there is a bunch of room down here, and so I encourage you, if you're really wanting to see that, you might want to walk around. Go ahead, Mr. Brewer.
Thank you. So the earlier exhibit showed the buildings, no trees. This shows, again, starting at the southern end with Building 8, 7, and parts of 6, the proposed buildings with the existing tree cover, sycamores, oops, sycamores and the Oleander Hedge. This is the northern portion of the site. Building 6 here, Building 5, Building 4, again, existing trees. The next slide, we add the new plantings, again, consistent with the condition of approval by the Planning Commission. So now we have the, the proposed buildings, the existing trees, and now we've added the proposed new landscaping. And we do the same on the northern side. So I believe that the existing trees provide an effective screen. By the time you add the new plantings to the existing trees, again, as requested by the Planning Commission, I think the buildings are effectively, but very pleasantly screened from view from the street and from across the street. Now, this is a table that compares the setbacks from the sidewalk and the elevations of the roofs as measured from the sidewalk. This is the table that also reflects something that Steve's presentation addressed. So I would draw your attention to this line. There are no CCNRs recorded against this parcel. None. We've done a title search. In fact, the title report was required when we submitted the application to the city. No CCNRs are recorded against the parcel. The CCNRs that exist for the American River Canyon subdivisions to the south each have a condition that says homes along American River Canyon Drive can be no higher than 25 feet. So the maximum allowed height of homes along American River Canyon Drive is 25 feet. In this instance, there are no apartment buildings proposed that come close to, and certainly none that exceed 25 feet. Note that Building 6 reflects 8 feet. Again, if you add the five-story, clear-story window that allows natural light to come in, it gets to 13 feet. And that's still, the widest or longest buildings, 5, 6, and 7, all present a vertical profile that is lower than a typical single-family home. And these will be screened by the vegetation you saw in the earlier exhibit. Traffic. One of the issues that provided some consternation at the Planning Commission hearing was a counterintuitive perspective. How, how could it be that existing conditions at AM peak hour traffic at this intersection could be a Level of Service E, and yet at general plan build-out, when all the development that is contemplated in the general plan has been built, how can it improve to Level of Service D? And Mr. Mallory and our traffic engineer had a very entertaining discussion, but it involved a lot of technical jargon that frankly went over the heads of a lot of people, including me. And it's counterintuitive. So I asked the question, and, and I'm, I'm not a scientist, but I do understand the use of computer models. And traffic engineers rely on models provided by the National Institute of Traffic Engineers, just as civil engineers rely on models to predict drainage flows, or air quality scientists and technicians use computer models to predict particulate matter and emissions from stationary sources and mobile sources. Traffic engineers do the same.
Just one other factoid in there. Traffic engineers start as civil engineers and specialize in traffic engineering. So they're usually both.
Point taken. My understanding of an explanation for this counterintuitive conclusion is that the traffic model predicts changes in travel patterns, not necessarily travel routes, but perhaps the time of travel. And it predicted that in the AM peak hour at general plan build-out, the traffic volume was spread more evenly across those one hour, that one hour, and was not subject to the spiking in any particular 15-minute segment.
When?
And the result of that model is that at this point, there is a 1.3 seconds shorter delay at that intersection than is the case currently.
Mr. Brewer, does that also anticipate the installation of the light? Oh, that doesn't even include the light being installed?
No, it only, it only presumes the traffic improvements contemplated in the general plan EIR.
Well, the general plan includes the installation of that traffic signal in 20, by 2035.
It includes the widening of the road, but not necessarily the signal. That's the way the general plan was done. We certainly, at this time, would include the signal.
I want the signal out there tomorrow.
At Baldwin Dam Road, and the intersection improvements, more importantly, at Folsom-Auburn and, and Oak Avenue.
Okay.
Well, I, I'd like to say something on that. If I remember right, Roy, somewhere in the discussion in the Planning Commission, the remark about how it would be improved is by irritation of not being able to move out in traffic, you would find new ways, therefore people would go another way and improve the traffic. That sounds like a hell of a model to me. Okay, and, and I, I'm not buying that.
All right, come on. I've, I've asked nicely.
Okay.
Please be respectful of everybody's opinion.
And, and another, another remark I want to make right now, and that, my friend Dave, I want to take him on. However, I live where they're proposing this four-lane widen from Baldwin Dam Road to Folsom Auburn. When I read the staff report, it was the first time I heard of it, and I'm a city councilman. Now, it may have been in the, I don't argue that you might have it in the plan, but that plan was about that tall, and I didn't see it. But I sure saw it in the staff report. I can tell you, I had a meeting with the community development director, city manager, but how come I don't know? And I can tell you, the neighbors here that are accept, sort of upset about what we're talking about tonight. I can tell you, the people that live by my, my side are going to fill this room the same way if that four-lane tries to go down that road because there, there are homes and fences on one side of that particular road that goes right on the, right on the road. And you're not going to tear up people's backyards to build four, four lanes to accommodate traffic that mostly comes from other areas and cut-through. So I'm just saying, I, I can accept you, 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 you know, you're saying that, but, but I don't, I don't consider it reality.
Dave, can you make your comment?
So currently, the right-of-way exists through there for the, everything up to some of the improvements at the intersection of Folsom Auburn and Oak Avenue. The right-of-way is existing because it was contemplated actually to be, I believe, a six-lane road in the general plan for 88 because, if you remember, that's where the bridge was originally supposed to cross the river. And since the bridge was moved to Lake Natoma, it was downgraded to a four-lane road.
And the bridge was moved because the neighbors then did not recognize making any extension of that right-of-way, regardless of what you had. I, I came in in 1985, prior to my, I don't know, I think a couple of years before, the neighbors stopped the bridge going across Oak Avenue Parkway for that reason. They were not going to give up their yards.
Ernie, I have to correct you on that. The neighbors didn't stop the bridge. A vote of the residents of the city of Folsom moved the bridge from Oak Avenue to Lake Natoma. That was not a neighborhood battle. That was a, a citywide referendum. And so we're going to take a second. I understand that city staff for the, some of the folks that have been standing for a super long time and maybe are particularly uncomfortable standing, staff is supposed to be putting about 20 seats in the back of the room. So...
Those are coming in probably about 10 minutes. They'll be set up back there. So I ask if you, if you could reserve those seats for anyone who is feeling challenged as standing for this length of time, but they'll be here soon.
Thank you.
Mr. Brewer, can I ask you?
I got a question. I got a question. How much longer am I going to let him pitch his side for? I think we'd like to pitch ours.
Okay, and, and you...
Yeah, I know, I know, I'm being rude and disrespectful and everything.
Actually, you are because we have...
When you're letting him pitch his side, have full...
And we, and we have an hour and a half worth of comments from the neighborhood.
I want, I want to be able to say what I want to say.
And, and you will be able to do that, sir, if you will kindly let him finish his presentation.
Mr. Brewer, as far as traffic models go and taking into account traffic habits or, you know, whatever the terminology was, wouldn't that be done for, for every intersection that was measured? It wouldn't just be for that intersection uniquely, would it?
It was done for every intersection.
So, so they take into account going at different times, changing your patterns in every intersection? So if we had seen something increase or decrease, it would have been reflected out there as well?
Yes, correct.
Okay, okay.
And the traffic analysis was vetted by your staff, vetted by your outside secret consultant, and the traffic consultant that your outside secret consultant engaged. So it was peer-reviewed. So getting back to the point, the 1.3 seconds less time improves the level of service at that intersection from Level of Service E to Level of Service D. 1.3 seconds creates that change in level of service. Now...
I've got another question. I'm really...
No, I'm, I'm really sorry, but I'm really sorry.
I'm just trying to understand.
Okay, what, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me.
I'm too...
Excuse me.
This is a manipulation of the truth.
No one is trying to manipulate anyone. And if you refuse, if you refuse to be respectful of all of the people that have spent time out of their evening tonight, I will ask the police department to remove you.
We're voters.
Okay, and you will, you will either be respectful...
You don't like it, you're going to be respectful of everybody here. How about letting you stop?
Madam Mayor, if I might, I think it might be helpful to explain the process that we use to the public, just in case, for those who haven't been to a meeting before. It isn't, sir. I, I think it'd be helpful for people to know the process.
The roof height is 12 feet above the sea level, this is at the sidewalk.
The applicant is going to get an opportunity to make a presentation. If you are not willing to wait your turn to speak, the applicant right now is simply addressing all of the issues that have been brought up in the emails that they have gotten, that we have gotten, and that have come up in other public meetings. Everyone will get their chance to speak, and if you, and all of the people, and I'm going to ask that all of the people that are being disruptive...
No. If you represent us, we want to be heard.
And you will be heard. You will be heard. You will be heard. We are trying to be respectful to you, and you will please be respectful to the council, the other people that are sitting in this room, or I will clear the room.
Mayor, one thought. Is there a limit on the decision as to level expectation?
He will be finished with his, Roy, how much longer you get?
Two points.
Two more points, and then we will move on to the, any comments from the residents?
Two minutes?
Two more points.
You got it, two more points. So...
Mayor?
Go ahead, please.
Thanks. Another question that has been raised is the risk or the fear that the apartment addition of 96 more units will somehow diminish the property values in the area. Now, Mr. O'Donnell's email of May 14th to the Planning Commission says that property values in the American River Canyon area range from $600,000 to $2 million. Now, assuming that Mr. O'Donnell's assessment of the marketplace is accurate, our intuitive conclusion is that the presence of the apartments for the last 32 years on the site have not provided an impediment to the appreciation of home values in the area. Now, we, to test our intuition, we did a search, public record search, homes listed, oops, homes listed for sale and homes sold. Of the 10 that are now for sale, the asking price, the average asking price is $636,600. If you eliminate the two homes in Orange Vale and focus only, well, and focus only on Folsom, the average asking price is $552,000. Now, let's look at sales, actual sales since 2001. 12 homes with an average price of $551,000. If, on the other hand, you look at the four most recent sales, December 18, back through April of 2017, I tried to capture two years. Those homes sold at an average price of $695,000. And the 12 homes that have sold since 2001 have an average annual appreciation of roughly 4.4%, including during the years of the Great Recession. So I believe, we believe the evidence reinforces what our intuition told us, that the presence of these apartments for 32 years has not created an impediment to the appreciation of property values. Lastly, there was a request, a condition of approval by the Planning Commission, that we meet with the American River Canyon Maintenance Association and talk about a contribution by the applicant to the maintenance costs. We were able to arrange that meeting finally on June 26. Mr. Horning and I attended that meeting, and we, we made an offer of that, at that meeting, to make a one-time contribution in 2019, provided the project is approved, one-time contribution in 2019 for capital expenditures of roughly $9,200. But beginning January, beginning January of next year, 2020, assuming the project is approved, the applicant would pay for the 96 additional units, the same association fee that every other member of the association pays, which we understand to be $360 a year. And that equates to $34,560 per year. It would be adjusted up and down every year, just as it is for every other member of the association. And we conveyed that in person on the 26th. We conveyed it in writing by email from me to Mr. O'Donnell the morning of Thursday, the 27th. Mr. O'Donnell replied by email the afternoon of the 27th and said, "We accept your offer." "We accept your offer, but we don't like the project." But we accept your offer in the event the project is approved." And that concludes my presentation, members. Our consultant team is available if you have any questions you'd like to direct to us.
Do you have any questions before I bring the public speakers up?
I do have questions. Mr. Brewer, the, the inventory, I guess, of trees?
Yes.
Where you, you referenced the red, which would indicate removal.
Yes.
The black ink indicates that you would be keeping those trees, but even some of the black ones, right?
No, I don't think the Arborists opined on, on whether we would take out trees for new buildings. I believe the Arborists' charge was to inspect each of the 183 trees and rate them according to their health, et cetera.
Okay, okay. So of the trees that you would be keeping?
Yes.
If there was a recommendation from the Arborists to do some pruning or... If there was a recommendation from the arborist to do some pruning, or mulching, or what have you, were those recommendations carried out? Have they been carried out yet?
Not to my knowledge yet.
Okay. But that is something that we could condition as a part of this. Also for you, is, is the property owner willing to change the color scheme?
Yes, I neglected to mention that. Thank you. When we met with, well, when we testified in front of the planning commission, we acknowledged the willingness to engage with the staff on color palettes. And when we met with the Maintenance Association leadership, we raised that question again and also heard from them that they'd like us to consider alternate, alternative roof lines. So we've done that as well, and we're happy to present that to you tonight, or present it to staff. We have looked at alternative color palettes and alternative roof lines.
Okay. Have you had any, have you had any conversations with the owner of the commercial center about possibly increasing the walkability between the apartment complex and, and the center, maybe shortcut or something?
We did early on, actually before the planning commission hearing, and Mr. Paul had that conversation, as I recall. And the owner at the time was not receptive to that idea.
Okay.
I follow conversation. He's willing to do it, give it a chance.
Oh, okay, perfect. Okay, okay.
Could I, could I ask that any conversations be only at the mic? If you, if you want to speak, you need to have a speaking card in, and also when we're turning to consultants, if folks could step up to the microphone, because we have to catch it, all of this, for transparency purposes on the recording, and we're not picking up in the audience unless you're at the microphone. So, sir, if you want to speak, you need to put a speaking card in. Thank you.
I already did.
Yeah, great. So, no, you need to be taken...
No.
No, that's cool. I'll do it right now.
No, actually, you will not, you will...
You need to be respectful of everybody in the room and take your turn. Please sit down.
Ernie, did you have a question?
Well, I've got questions, but I want to wait to hear the people, then we'll come back to you if you don't mind.
Understood.
Okay. I do have one question, and I'm not sure if this is for our staff or for, for the development team. Do we have the, we had seven hundred and five additional daily trips. What is the additional, what is the current count for, I believe that was both American River Canyon Drive and Oak Avenue? I'm just wondering percentage-wise what, what that increase in trips is.
Mayor, how, I would have to look into the traffic study to, to find that number.
Okay, can you see if you can find it while we're...
Yes.
...discussing this? Thanks. Okay, Mike, any questions?
No questions right now.
Are you the only one that has a question? Right now, in the formal...
Yeah, so, so Robert's Rules of Order typically means that presentation by staff, questions of the council of staff, presentation by the applicant, questions of the applicant, and then public comment, and then a new round of questions by the council.
Okay, so if the applicant has no more questions, and this, and the council members have no more questions...
I reserve time after the public testimony.
Yes, you can.
Mayor, I would like to address some comments he made about our negotiations with them two weeks ago.
Okay, if you want to take, if you have a card in and you want to take your three minutes now, you're welcome to do that. So, but, but how this is going to work, for everybody's benefit, I have like twenty-five cards up here right now, and everybody's going to get three minutes. I will call a number of names up, and one of the cards I have is David and Kathleen M.C.C. McCumiski. I'm sure I'm spelling that wrong, but that will mean that between the two of you, you will get a total of three minutes. And I'll name, I'll list several people in advance of their time to come up, so if you could line up and be close by, it'll waste less time of people going back and forth to their seats. So if you will introduce yourselves, then I will pull your card.
Mayor, my name is Manuel Zamorano. I'm vice president, secretary of the American River Canyon Maintenance Association, and I'd like to have, if possible, six minutes, because I'm reading a statement from our president who was unable to be here and has a written statement, and then I'd like to make my three minutes, if that's okay.
I'm going, I'm going to give you a total of six minutes.
I'll be very fast. Thank you. And this is from, from, from our president when we negotiated with him, and I want to make it crystal clear what we did, okay? And it says, "American River Canyon Maintenance Association is tasked with maintaining two miles of American River Canyon Parkway, southern entail overall landscaping, pruning, watering, managing the weekly ground, updating the sprinklers, interfacing residents complaints in two miles." He says, "And we have six hundred and eighty-seven homes." That's at least two voters per home. So I want you to take that into consideration when you cast your vote. Okay? That's going to be, that's going to be...
Please, please don't do this.
That's going to be very relevant.
Everybody can hear the speaker.
Now, in our meeting, and this is, this is what Patrick O'Donnell is writing, "We made it very clear that no agreement, way, shape, or form creates to an agreement on overall apartment expansion. We do not agree to this expansion, and we have not included in their process. Their proposal is in direct conflict with Folsom twenty-thirty-five general plan adopted ten months ago, despite descriptions that the proposal adheres to the general plan. Do not let CTA LLC convince you that there are negotiations regarding the monetary scope or proposal." And what happened, they were willing to make an, a, a offer on helping us, American River Canyon, maintain our street. And we negotiated not on the basis that we supported it, but if we were beat here today through your vote, they agreed to pay three hundred and sixty dollars per new apartment to us to maintain the canyon. That's all that happened. We never, ever agreed to these apartments, and we don't agree to those apartments now. Now, I'm going to start on my own time now. First, let me say that I think that you've all done a good job for this city, and I'm proud of Folsom, and I'm proud of what we've done in our community. But let me tell you what's going to happen. I grew up in northern Orange County. My families moved there, families went in, we built our homes, built the streets, built the schools, built the community like we've done here. And what happens? Then developers come, and they bring in these monstrosities of, of apartments, and for the first LLC, it works real fine, because they've got their money, they've got their building, they've got their revenues, and what do they do? They sell it. And then a few years later, it gets sold again. And a few years later, it's sold again. And pretty soon what happens, all that investment starts to go bad. Water heaters go bad, windows go bad, carpets go rotten, roads go bad, cement goes bad, asphalt goes bad, and pretty soon, the third or fourth purchaser has more repairs to do than he can get revenue. So what happens? They're an LLC, so they get up and they leave. And what happens? These apartments get abandoned, and they get burned, and pretty soon you have Section Eight people in there, and the whole community is brought down by these apartments. That's what happens. Saturday, they had a fire, and the fire department had a heck of a time getting in there. And why? Because everything they put in, stoves, refrigerators, faucets, toilets, everything is low-grade. And you know, I'm sure all of you are homeowners, you know what it costs to maintain your home. It's the same for them, only they're in it for the profit. And in ten years, and I asked Darren, now, they're good people, I'm not, I'm not imputing their integrity, but I'm imputing the cost that's going to be imposed on us. We're going to be the losers. We paid to maintain that canyon. It's beautiful. I wish you'd come and see it, and we don't want to lose it. We appreciate the way it is. And all those projections you saw out there are going to take the green belt away, and we're going to have twenty, thirty-feet-high buildings next to the sidewalk, a wall. And it's, it's building eight. You notice, they didn't focus on building eight too much. So I ask you, when you go to vote, know what you're doing to six hundred and eighty-seven homeowners that have gone in there with their blood, sweat, and toil, their money, their investments, their homes, their families, their children, their schools, so that seven, and he's got seven people who are contributing to this project can overrate eight hundred and sixty-seven homeowners. It's wrong. You represent us, not them. You need to vote our way, not their way. And I would hope in the future, give them three minutes.
Can I ask you a quick question? Can I ask you a clarifying question? The six hundred and eighty-seven, I think you referenced, does that include the Canyon Ridge community?
That's the American River Canyon Maintenance Association.
No, I understand that. Does that include...
Wait a minute, those are all the homes that pay to maintain the canyon.
I understand that. I'm wondering if the Canyon Ridge community is part of that city. They are? Okay.
No.
Okay, so, so they do not contribute to the Maintenance Association of the Parkway? Okay.
Oh, well, that, then there's more. There's more than...
But they don't contribute to the maintenance of the Parkway, is what I was trying to get at.
No, no, no.
They do, they have their own...
Oh, oh, yeah. They have their own association.
Okay, thank you.
Only those that are in our association pay.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker...
Wait a minute, one more thing. They agreed that if we didn't, if you passed this, they agreed to pay three hundred and sixty dollars a year per ninety-six apartments in perpetuity.
That's exactly what Mr. Brewer said.
And second, second, I asked them, would they sign an agreement not to sell those apartments? They said no.
Okay, the next speaker will be David and Kathleen. I apologize, it's hard to read. David and Kathleen here?
And if I could just interject while she's coming up here, we, the camera operators are confirming for us that when we're speaking to the overheads, they're broadcasting that.
Could you just pronounce your last name for me?
It's McCumiski.
Okay, thank you.
David McCumiski, husband and wife. We're friendly fire. I just wanted to voice our opinion as far as opposing this, these apartments. We feel very fortunate to have found our home. We looked for a house for three and a half years, literally, to find something pristine, a mature neighborhood, a neighborhood that we'd be proud to live in, and we found it.
And it was fully established, apparently, at the time. It appeared to be fully established, and we didn't see any opportunity for expansion. That was one of the reasons that we loved moving here.
Security, mature neighborhood.
Quiet.
Beautiful. I think that American River Canyon Parkway is, is an absolute jewel in our neighborhood. I don't know of another street that's that fantastic. That's the first thing that we thought when we drove up. We thought, "Look at this, this is beautiful." They, they maintain it, we, of course, we maintain it too, but we were very proud to be here. One thing that came to mind when they were talking about expanding the Baldwin Dam Road, if you head west...
There's not a discussion about expanding Baldwin Dam Road. It had to do with whether there, there would be an installation of a signal light as opposed to a stop sign.
But you know, they have double stop signs near the strawberry stand there. It's already a nightmare. And the, you know, the...
It's Oak Avenue.
Oak Avenue.
Right.
It's, it's a nightmare today, already. So, you know, it, it, this, this whole thing about traffic, there's a lot of traffic, possibly more traffic heading west than east. So anyway, we, we walk the canyon, my wife and I. We love our walks. Just absolutely terrific neighborhood. We don't need more traffic.
The traffic has increased since we've lived there. We've noticed it, it has increased, and it's not so much that as the noise that comes with it, the speeding that comes with it, the stop sign running that comes with it, and the garbage on the Parkway. We've seen all of that increase since we've been here.
They were talking about a wall.
Yeah.
I heard an eight-foot wall. I think I heard also a ten-foot wall.
No, there's, there's no wall.
There is no wall at all?
No.
Okay. Yeah, because we...
I love it with, there's no wall at all with a British accent. I like that.
We're thinking graffiti.
No.
Because that would take the view away for...
No wall.
For everybody. Well, anyway, we vote a strong no on the canyon terrace apartments expansion. Neighborhoods like ARC are a treasure, and we would like to see it preserved, and YCram apartments, new apartments in where there's very little space already. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kathy Strahan, then Carol Roca, and then Greg Ozdinsky.
Good evening. Please vote no on this development. I first came to Sacramento, and this is my story, in nineteen ninety-two, at which time I was offered and accepted the position of head softball coach at Sacramento State. Hi, Sarah. After a year of coaching, I wanted to live here permanently. I loved the campus, the people here, and I felt at home. In ninety-three, I found my forever home in American River Canyon South in the city of Folsom. Things that I were looking for, that I was looking for at the time that attracted me were custom homes, scenic natural beauty all throughout, and it was an established neighborhood with mature landscaping. American River Canyon South was built out. I didn't have to worry about a Walmart going in down the street. I am before you now because I am stunned to learn that canyon terrace apartments could be rezoned. I'm aware the city of Folsom is under pressure to build more affordable housing, but why does American River Canyon have to suffer the consequences of flawed city planning over the past ten, fifteen, and twenty years? I read the canyon terrace apartment initial study by Helix provided to the city of Folsom. Determination of impact was as it related to the city of Folsom overall. I could see how this project was deemed less than significant, but this will be more than significant for American River Canyon. This terrace apartment development calls for the addition of ninety-six new apartment units, a forty-eight percent increase, and two hundred and thirty-three new parking spaces. That's a seventy-two percent increase. This is more than significant to American River Canyon South. Does this matter? American River Canyon Drive, or the Parkway, is a direct route to the highly-traffic green back lane. Many of our residents walk the Parkway, including with pets. I do also. You heard from Damon Kathleen McCumiski. I'm very worried about a significant increase in vehicular traffic. From my point of view, and we could debate this all day long, this community is a NORC, N-O-R-C. It is a naturally-occurring retirement community. Look it up, it's a thing. So many of its residents, myself included, are over the age of fifty or fifty-five. I'm worried about our safety. You've heard about CCNRs. Our CCNRs mandate that only one-story buildings or homes can be built along the Parkway. The development plans call for three-story apartment buildings along the Parkway. That changes the whole look and goes against the vision with which our CCNRs were created. And finally, our residents pay homeowners' association fees to maintain the Parkway. As far as I know, CTA pays nothing and doesn't plan to with this development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Carol Roca, Greg Ozdinsky, then John Gerson.
Please don't start the clock yet, because I have a document that Mr. Brewer referred to that he couldn't do after his extensive research, trying to find anything at their closing costs when the applicant actually purchased the property. So I'm not as smart as Mr. Brewer and these other guys, but my wife is very smart, and she's the one that found it. So I'd like to, like to give that to you right now, so you have this document.
You can give it to the officer, please. And we're going to need to get a copy of that, so staff can be given a copy of it.
That took my wife extensive research to find, so she did find it, it's something that was recorded. So I'm surprised a developer of that size couldn't find it.
But again, the, the problem is that I'm actually going to ask you if you will wait so that we can get copies of this document, so the council members and our staff can see what we're talking about, because all five of us can't.
I'm not going to talk about that. I'm just, he said he couldn't find it. My smart wife found it for him, so there's a document.
There's no, but there's no way to address it, because none of us know what it is.
Okay, but I just wanted, he did, he said he couldn't find it, we found it, so you can look at it later before your vote.
Okay.
So do you want me to wait until, has nothing to do with what I'm talking about?
Okay, then, then please go on.
Okay. I'm Greg Ozdinsky, I'm a thirty-year resident in Folsom. First things first, I do not support the applicant to build the infill project. I want to make a point that at least fifty friends and neighbors are on vacation, they feel the same way, they would have been here as well. The applicant stated at the city planning meeting that the company is local, but it owns eight thousand apartments in the... owns 8,000 apartments in the, in California, 8,000. If they're a local company, the applicant really hasn't demonstrated good behavior in being a good neighbor to American River Canyon Maintenance Association. The applicant purchased the canyon terrace apartments in 2007 for 21.6 million. Current value is roughly around $40 million. In those 12 years, they have never once came to an ARCA meeting, not once, and the signs are out every time we have a meeting. I wanted to ask the council, have they ever donated any resources or time to support the city? I don't think so. I know the people behind me have. The applicant has a 230-page reference as to why this project is so good. Well, I can think of 8,000 reasons why it's not. This is a big company, and their number-one goal is profits. Their model is to maximize profits by maximizing land use. The applicant offered the city 139,000 or 10 low-income housing, low-income units. That's, an average of an apartment is $200,000. That's not a very good deal for the city when they can increase that value. In 40 years of private sector business, I, I learned a few things. One is mutuality. This is not a mutuality agreement. It's only a win-win for the applicant. When it's all said and done, if you approve this project, they're going to increase their property value roughly around $20 million. The applicant states that this will help housing. It doesn't help, it makes matters worse. I called around today, and there's plenty of vacancies. Canyon Terrace, the one they own, they have 10 right now. Folsom Ranch, the one they own, they have 22 vacancies. Lake Point down the road, 23 vacancies. Canyon Terrace actually said, when I called today, they always have vacancies. And by the way, when they have a two-bedroom apartment, they allow five people, five people to be in that apartment, plus two dogs. In their proposal up here, they don't even have a dog park on their premises. They use our land that we use and pay for to clean up. The other point, counsel, is they raise the rents. This is not affordable housing. They're going to model what they did in Folsom Ranch. After they remodeled, and that's a beautiful project, and I support that, they raised the rents anywhere from 23 to $3,000 a month. That's a lot of money for anybody to afford. 96 units is not the answer. My solutions for the applicant's greed is four. Have the applicant buy 16.9 acres of the south of 50 and build an apartment complex of 296 there.
Greg, I'm going to ask you to speed up, and I'm going to ask the audience to please stop doing this, so Greg can finish his comments.
They have the money, that would be a nice fit for your project over there. Scale down the project that fits our neighborhood. They're talking about trees, but they, they forgot to mention, it's 40-year-old trees. They're not just little saplings, and I walked the property today. They said there's a lot of them that are not in good health. I counted about 10. And have them set back farther away, away, so it doesn't affect the landmark Parkway that we all enjoy. If you approve, number three, would approve it for current format, if you do that, the voters, the neighbors, and your friends would never forget that. And if you, number four, do not approve it, and your voters and your neighbors will always remember that you did the right thing, and distinct by nature will become the beauty of American River Canyon Drive. And that, that's a win-win. So, please vote no on this project. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is, is Carol Roka here? Okay, Carol Roka, then John Gerson, then Sharon Kendall.
Good evening, Mayor Howell, and I'm the city council. I bought in American River Canyon 10 years ago. It was before I was married or even had children. I was drawn to the area coming from downtown, because I love the neighborhood and being so established. I love the era of the 80s and 90s of the design, and I knew that that would be my forever home and where I would eventually have my family. The way the apartments sit now, as often as I buzz all around that neighborhood, it's really not in your face. It's pressed back, we all know it's there, we see people now and again at the pool, and, you know, there's not loitering or foot traffic or anything that I would even say really sticks out in all the years I've lived there. The style of the new proposed apartments, with all due respect to the architect and designer, I, I don't think match or blend at all with what the design of the neighborhood is. If I wanted to live in a Thomis or something like that, I would expect to be living next to a newer, you know, apartment like that. One thing that hasn't been really talked about is theft. We had a vehicle stolen from our, right on our driveway last year. We have neighbors on our street that have been broken into, both their cars and their homes. And at the risk of sounding, you know, real judgy and awful, I would like to say that the thought of low-income housing coming into my neighborhood and increasing any sort of crime or theft, which always shocks me even, even exists in our neighborhood as it is, is really, you know, concerning. Traffic's been discussed a lot in the Oak Avenue and Folsom Boulevard, Folsom Auburn area. Greenback hasn't really been talked about that a lot. Coming off of Greenback, or from American to Greenback seems to be just as congested, if not more, during those peak times, and I don't know why that hasn't been talked about as far as how many cars are going to be stacked up for each changing light. That seems like it would definitely not be something that would stay stagnant. There would definitely be an increase of traffic there. House values were compared to 2001, and, and those times, you know, I've seen a couple houses sell in our neighborhood since we've been there. You know, I, I don't know if it makes a difference if apartments are there or not, but this, to me, seems like if, if the applicant was proposing a renovation and, you know, a little bit of a facelift on their property, I don't think you'd have so many haters here, you know, talking about it.
Actually, they, they included that in the presentation, said that's exactly what they're doing, yes.
Well, if it was a renovation of the existing buildings.
They're doing all of that.
But they're adding.
They're adding and renovating.
That's a difference. I'm saying if the building stayed where they were, kind of incognito and tucked back off the street, and they were just going to be replacing some fascia, you know, and painting and upgrading a pool house, it's not as offensive to us who live there.
And, and if that's all they were doing, this meeting wouldn't be taking place.
Well, that's my point. We're all here because they're a business in the center of our neighborhood. We live there, reside there, pay taxes there, and this is a business that's being allowed to come into the middle of our neighborhood and affect us all. And so, I just ask tonight, when you make your vote, that you consider all of us that live there not people that are just coming there and, and there for profits.
Thank you. John Gerson, then Sharon Kendall, and Jeffrey Franz.
Well, a lot of my thunder's been taken from the last two speakers, but I'll try anyway.
You can say ditto anytime you like.
Okay, thank you. My name's John Gerson, and I've lived in my home in American River Canyon, or a, a street right off American River Canyon, for over 38 years, since 1980. I walked American River Canyon practically every day and familiar with the neighborhood very well. It is one of the more prestigious neighborhoods in Folsom. There's about 680 homes in American River Canyon South and about 760 in American River Canyon North. They're all part of American River Canyon. That's a total of 1,440 homes, their owners, many of which have their largest investment in their lives in their home, and their home is very important to them, so is their neighborhood. It's common knowledge that as rentals increase in a neighborhood, the desirability of the neighborhood decreases and values suffer. Not that the values go down, but compared to other prestigious neighborhoods, they're not keeping up. There have been discussions about increased traffic caused by tenants at the canyon terrace apartments. Well, it's obvious that will occur with the associated noise and pollution. Now, I'm not just talking about Oak Avenue, I'm concerned with American River Canyon. The apartments are close to Oak Avenue, and they're driving all the way down American River Canyon to get to Greenback. That's what bothers me. That's a lot of extra traffic on American River Canyon. An argument in favor of the added development is that needed for extra housing in California. Well, as mentioned before, they could build it anyplace they want, but if you build it in the prestigious neighborhood, it's worth more, and when you sell it, you get more for it. The added property taxes that the, that Folsom will receive from the expansion of the apartment complex is dwarfed by what the 1,400, 1,440 homeowners pay right now. It's quite a bit. I've attended, well, this is on a side note, I've attended many presentations by companies and/or developers that are raising funds to build new or renovate existing apartment complexes. Their goal is strictly profit for themselves and distribution and capital gains for their investors. Building in a desirable and well-established neighborhood would provide the opportunity to raise rents and add to their profits. The more rent, the more income you generate, the more you can sell your building for. The timeframe for these developers varies. Some, some will just build to flip, some build to renovate and flip, and others actually build rent for a period of time, could be three, five years, and it generates distributions to their investors, and at the time that they sell, they get maximum profit. Not just a little profit, but a whole bunch, because the, as the rent goes up, the value goes up. When they sell, they lose all interest in the neighborhood, but the homeowners have to suffer with, or live with the fallout from whatever they did. Renters have no ownership interest or stake in the neighborhood. If it goes downhill, they call a moving company, and they're gone. I believe that anyone in favor of apartments, adding apartments to American River Canyon, do not live there, and may even be one of the development's investors, I don't really know. Anyway, thank you for listening to me, and please do not let the complex expand. If you care about your current neighbors and constituents in Folsom, please do not allow the canyon terrace apartments to expand. Putting those apartments in the first time was a mistake, and I hate to see you make a second one.
Thank you. Sharon Kendall.
So, I need the use of the overhead projector, and if someone could.
Somebody, I don't know how to do that. Maybe we'll, okay. Maybe we could have Jeffrey Franz go while we are figuring out the technical things.
Shouldn't we noted whilst they're doing that, that when it grew, she used to, when people were talking, that the mayor needs to share the presentation?
My sincere apologies, the mayor had to use the restroom.
Oh, we got it?
Is that all right?
And for the record, I could hear the previous speaker in the ladies' room.
Okay, what I have here is a picture of the west. First of all, my name is Sharon Kendall, and I would say, good evening, Mayor Howell, city council members, and Folsom citizens. First of all, I just wanted to explain what I have here, what I have on the screen. This is the west entrance to the city of Folsom. You can see where American River Canyon takes off of Greenback, and then above would be the, the Terrace Canyon. So, I live in American River Canyon, and I have been an advocate for better quality of life in our neighborhood for almost six years. The request to increase density zoning at the canyon terrace on American River Canyon Drive is to disregard public safety. The American River Canyon community is unique. We are adjacent to the Orangeville boundary. We have the most beautiful, mature trees, a sloping road with curves coming upon, few stop signs, and not even one crosswalk on one mile of American River Canyon Drive. We have many Parnell Jones wannabes who are speeding in our neighborhood, maybe do Hollywood stops, or don't even brake and just cruise through. We do, however, have many senior citizens, and we have young children that would benefit from a real traffic study that would protect our citizens. Now, at the north end of American River Canyon, we have a request for 96 more apartments with up to three bedrooms, and at the south end, our plans for a three-story office building with 90 parking spaces below. This property, which is indicated here, that's 9,600 Greenback Lane.
I'm sorry, Sharon, I'm going to just ask staff a question about that. Correct me if I'm wrong, Pam and Dave, but isn't that actually in Orangeville?
That's actually Sacramento County, on that side of the road.
So, it's not the city of Folsom, so, and I'm not.
It doesn't make any difference.
No, I, I just, I just want to clarify, because it's, this conversation is making it sound like the city is approving that, and I don't know, the city has no knowledge of anything that's being planned there.
And that's unfortunate, that the city is not looking at a property that's 500 feet away from the intersection of American River.
We have looked at it. In fact, when it was being marketed as a Folsom address, we had our staff call the Realtor to explain to them that, no, that is not in fact in Folsom, and no, there is no approved project on that parcel that we are aware of.
Well.
I just wanted, I just wanted to throw that out there.
And it's still high-density, but I went down to the Sacramento County Planning, and I talked to the Department of Transportation today. And it says, because site improvement commenced prior to the expiration of subject use permits, the use permit is still considered to have been used for the purpose for which it was granted and is active.
Okay.
And, excuse me here. Okay, so, as I was explaining, that they had, were talking about a three-story office building with 90 parking spaces underground. So, it doesn't make any difference if, even if this does not mature, which it's still active, it's, it is rated as high-density, and it's 500 feet away from the American River Canyon Drive. The Orangeville property is already zoned high-density and will soon be pouring traffic onto the west entrance of Folsom. There is no way that this will not severely impact us, as well as the police and fire department from getting to us and on a timely manner. This Orangeville property site, already zoned high-density, is located at 9,600 Greenback. And furthermore, plans show the office building employees will only be able to exit to the right. So, that means that they're at 9,600 Greenback, they have to go to the right, which means that they're going to have to either do a U-turn if they wanted to go left at American River Canyon Drive, or they would go onto American River Canyon Drive, or they would go to Folsom.
Sharon, are you getting close to summary?
Okay. So, this means, to understand the real traffic issue, we need to look at the cumulative impact of both north and south entrances to the American River Canyon community. Please vote no on increasing the density zoning as our lives depend upon it.
Thank you. Is Jeffrey Franz here?
Yes, he is.
Okay, thank you.
Hi.
Then Marilyn Huber, Huber, Howber. Okay, Stan Fraser, and Cheryl Partey.
Hi, Mayor. Hi, folks. Thanks for allowing us to make our comments tonight. I'm absolutely against this. I think it's, it's an awful idea. You've got history that shows that you've had apartments here in the past, and now you want to expand them, and by definition, the apartments, by definition, are going to increase traffic, and there, it's going to be a problem. And I would like you to get informed about the two stop signs on the west on Oak that's already a traffic jam right now, that's obscene, and I've been for 20 years traveling the road Oak to go to, to work, and it can be, right now, it can be jammed up, okay? On top of that, what we haven't talked about is exacerbating that, when there's other issues in the cities, when people say, oh, let's take Oak if there's a problem on Hazel or something like that. So, the, the traffic is one significant issue that is, by definition, not going to get better. I would also argue with the gentleman who presented the apartment buildings, that apartments don't have an impact on the values of home. My response to that is that's complete nonsense. Our home values may go up, but they may not go up as much as they should go, and when you put more apartments in there, by definition, you are not. by definition, you are not increasing our home values. It will decrease the potential growth of the home values. There's a digression I'd like to make as well. I've been in Folsom for 20 years, and I came here from El Dorado Hills. Why did I leave El Dorado Hills? It's so wonderful. Right behind my fence in El Dorado Hills, a multi-200-unit apartment complex was placed there. It wasn't to be placed there when I lived there for 10 years. I tried to fight it, and it didn't work, so I left El Dorado Hills. I don't want to leave Folsom. Please say no to this. Thank you.
Marilyn, then Stan, then Cheryl Pardee, then Mike Olson.
Does this spend, or should I just... Okay. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Unquestionably, an increase of traffic will add significantly to air pollution. It is a fact that, quote, "noxious and unhealthy exhaust gets trapped in Folsom," unquote. This information can be found on the Sacramento Air Quality Index. More traffic brings irrefutable increase in dangerous and potentially deadly accidents to pedestrians, bicyclists, and pets and wildlife. In addition, the threat of road rage will escalate. More traffic, more pollution, more noise, and certain increased danger will measurably decrease the value of our homes. Unlike the farcical slide presentation about the value of this so-called "our homes" without this proposal, this was a slide without the proposal. The integrity of our neighborhood will disintegrate. Those who were seeking the peace of American River Canyon and American River Canyon North will now look to other neighborhoods that offer the safety and sanctity of life. Killing more than 100 trees means the death of wildlife and irreplaceable delicate biosystems. The destruction of trees and their roots translates to soil erosion. Soil erosion coupled with concrete and more concrete results in flooding onto the existing lower apartments. Moreover, the existing trees and earth are homes to wildlife who play an integral role in the balance of nature. Their presence also provides serenity and beauty. The decimation of established trees will be the decimation of generational homes to owls and falcons who prey upon the rodent population in the area. Beneficial bats, who consume thousands and thousands of mosquitoes each day, will inevitably die. Tree-nesting birds and mammals will no longer have the security of towering trees. Who or what benefits from this boondoggle? That is the question. Certainly not the homeowners. Certainly not existing apartment residents. Certainly not pedestrians, bicyclists, pets, and law-abiding drivers. Certainly not trees, the surrounding earth. The beneficial and beautiful wildlife that lives in the earth and in those giant trees. Certainly not our air. Certainly not the quietude. And certainly not the quality of American River Canyon life that we know today. The only sure profiteer is the developer who will pad his pockets and move on to another piece of pristine property to plunder. If revenue is spurring this exploitation, I ask each of you to please remember your role as our Folsom representatives. Your position and your decision will either be tainted by failing to preserve what is really important, or your position and your decision can reflect the ultimate responsibility you bear to protect the quality of life in Folsom. We are Folsom. Thank you.
Stan Fraser, Cheryl Pardee, Mike Olson.
Hi, my name is Stan Fraser. I've lived in Folsom, American River Canyon, 35 years now. I want to thank all the city council for what you've done for our wonderful city. I'd like to keep it wonderful, okay? We've heard a lot of emotions. We've seen presentations with i's dotted and t's crossed. I'm going to come at you from a little bit different standpoint. We started the meeting off today with a pledge of allegiance and to the republic for which it stands, okay? Our republic form of government is of the people, by the people, and for the people. Words ensconced in American lexicon by Abraham Lincoln at Gettysburg, okay? You all took an oath. We voted you into office. We want you to be loyal to us, to the people, of, by, and for the people. We are the people. And I don't care about the presentation. I'm not against profits either, guys. I understand it all, okay? But the people apparently don't want this project to go forward. It is your duty, it was your oath, to do what the people voted you to do. And the people don't want this project. Show your loyalty to our form of government, to the people of Folsom, and to the oath you took. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Cheryl Pardee, Mike Olson, and then Craig Davis.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Pardee, and I live in American River Canyon North. I moved to Folsom from living in Curtis Park in downtown Sacramento, where I really loved living there because of the beautiful trees and the wonderful environment. But I decided it was too crowded and things were changing, and I moved to Folsom after a lot of looking around. And it's a lovely place. There's some beautiful, there's some things that people have said that I agree with, and I'm against this, totally against it. I want to be on record of saying that. But there's a few things that I'm very concerned about. One of the things that the developer mentions is that we need to have low-income housing, and we need to have apartments. Well, if anybody's been driving around greater Folsom, there's apartments everywhere. There's apartments on the corner of Riley and Bidwell going in. They're huge, they're ugly, you can't miss them. There's apartments on Iron Point. There's apartments, you know, just go down the street. You haven't been down in a while, there's apartments. So I'm sure that the apartment quota has been met and will be met. We don't need to meet it in a lovely area like American River Canyon, which is one of the prettiest areas. I love it every day. I've only lived in the area for six years. But it's wonderful, and frankly, I don't want to have to move if things start going south here. So I just want, and another thing that concerns me is water. We're always harping on water around here. It's like, you know, we had drought a couple of years ago. We had to cut back our watering. And now we want 96 additional apartments put in, which will have at least one, two, three, four, depending on the apartments. All those people need water. And, you know, it's like, where's this water coming from? And that's just a general statement for Folsom. Where is this water going to come from with all this growth? So I think we've made the apartment quota somewhere else. I would rather not see it in a lovely place like American River Canyon. And, you know, it's a dog and pony show. I was in business for a long time. I don't like the dog, I don't like the pony, and apartments are ugly. Okay, thank you.
Mike Olson, Craig Davis, and then Joan Ives.
Hello, my name is Mike Olson. We moved to Folsom from Santa Clara about five years ago. The reason we moved from there to where we are now on American River Canyon is because of the apartments, because of the concrete, because of the congestion, the traffic. Everything was crazy. We moved out of there to come up here. And by, I say, my dad lived in Folsom for 25, 30 years. We came up here four or five times a year. We love Folsom. That's why we moved here. And to see this happening right now, because we moved here, to see it start growing again, I'm just thinking, what else? What's going to happen up next? Once this goes up, you're going to pop it up someplace else. You're going to tear out the strawberry fields. You're going to build more apartments. It's got to stop. And that's the reason we're all here. I don't know of anybody here that's for it. Not one. Therefore... Lovely presentation, by the way. I didn't understand it, but it was okay. I don't, I'm opposed to this. I've seen what apartment complexes do. I've seen crime go up. They had a fire there. It was total chaos. The fire department couldn't even hardly get in there. It was lined up all the way out to where the entrance is. An apartment, and then an ambulance showed up. Thank God they didn't need it, because it wouldn't have got in there. We don't need this. We didn't move there for this. There's not one soul here. This is probably the biggest crowd you've seen in a long time, I'm sure. And to me, you know, you're all fine folks and all that, but if you vote for this, you're not doing us anything. We're the people here. We live here. We're the one that pay your wages. We voted you in. These guys, where do they live? Does anybody live in American River Canyon?
I live in Willow Creek.
Oh, okay.
Not sure what that's supposed to mean, but...
No, I mean, it's just absurd that you take all these folks that are here, and believe me, like the gentleman, one gentleman said 50 people or more on vacation, they would be here. Not one of them is for it. And if you all put it forward, you're not doing us justice, you're doing them justice. And I'm all against it, and I hope you understand what these folks here, they came here to oppose the thing, not for it. You're voted in by us. Do us the job you're supposed to do. Thank you.
Thanks. Craig Davis, Joan Ives, and Sheri Hofer.
Hi, Mayor Howell, and council members. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Craig Davis. I live on Oak Canyon Way in American River Canyon. I lived there for seven years. And just want to go on record that I am opposed to this project. Try to keep this brief and just stress a couple of points. I think you've heard them from everybody, but want to make sure we hear them one more time. Have heard a lot about affordable housing. That seems to be a very popular term that's been thrown around. What I have not seen is how this project moves the needle on affordable housing. So where are the numbers that say by adding these 96 units, we've addressed the affordable housing problem? We've added 10 low-income units. What does that really do for the city of Folsom? For that benefit, there is an impact. There's an impact to the American River Canyon neighborhood and that region of Folsom. There's a visual impact. Today, when you go down American River Canyon, you have a sense of openness. Doesn't matter how tall the wall is, whether it's a wall or a building. You're going to line the side of the street, and you're going to take away that openness. It is going to change the feel and the character of that neighborhood. You have .2 miles of American River Drive that are going to be impacted and changed. Another area of concern is traffic. We've all heard the traffic study. It was a very entertaining conversation at the planning commission. And I think it left more residents with questions about the logic that's being applied to this project to make it sound beneficial. When you look at American River Drive, I have not heard anything about a traffic study on the surface streets. I heard one statement that traffic will improve over time because if you make it bad enough, people will find a better way to go. Where are they going to go? American River Canyon Drive. That is going to become the thoroughfare. I read a very nice article this morning on the city's website. Empire Ranch is getting six new traffic lights. 1.6-mile stretch of road, six traffic lights. American River Canyon is two miles long. We have two stop signs, three stop signs. So what do we have to look forward to? So please keep these things in mind as you consider this project. And I do hope that you will not approve this moving forward. Thanks.
Thanks, Joan Ives, Sheri Hofer, and Casey Ryan. And I'm just going to remind everybody, if you've got a cell phone that's got the volume turned up, if you could turn it down, please, that'd be great.
My name is Joan Ives, and I've lived here for 19 years. And ditto, 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 ditto. Anyway, I was going up American River Drive today, and I was counting the trees by this proposed apartment. And there were 10 beautiful trees and a whole bunch of oleanders. And it struck me, as I looked at it, if they had these apartments in, there would be 10 beautiful trees, and all the oleanders would be sticks. And so if you look from across the street, you'd see tree, tree, and little saplings. And that wouldn't be a very good picture. Anyway, I read the Folsom Telegraph every week, and I always read the crime log. And I'm afraid with extra traffic and stuff, we'll have more DUIs. If you read around the crime log, there is like a circle. And they're always having DUIs over the Orangevale Bridge in that area there. There's drugs and everything else. And I cut this one out, and this guy's name was Albert Carbonia. 37 of Orangevale was arrested for driving under the influence at 9:55 PM on American River Canyon Drive and Waterview Way. That was on May 17th. But in the Telegraph, there's all the DUIs all over the place. And I'm just thinking that with increased traffic, that they would be speeding along American River. And I'm one of the old residents, I move slow. So if I was crossing the street, there's very few crosswalks. There's, if I have to walk half a mile, I might find a crosswalk. What if I'm walking along and somebody speeds along and bang, no me? But anyway, that's one reason that I think we shouldn't have those apartments. And it's beautiful. And another thing, are the apartment houses going to slope down this way? Because if you look at the hill there, and I don't know how, it's such a drop that I don't know how they can build a building straight up, up at the sidewalk, when it just, it just has a terrible slope there. So I just think it's a bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri Hofer, Casey Ryan, and Brandon Goodell.
Mayor and city council, thank you. My name is Sheri Hofer. And I think I sent a letter to everybody expressing my concerns with this development. So I probably don't need to reiterate all that, but I will go over just a couple of points. Like many of my neighbors and my friends, I've been concerned about, you know, how to affect our property value. My home, I've been in this area in American River Canyon South for 35 years. I think I probably came shortly after or before the apartments were put there. But it looked to me as though it was a very intentional design. The apartments have, from my perspective, been good neighbors. I don't really notice them. They're kind of hidden behind the trees. It's, you know, we have a beautiful neighborhood, and I'd like to keep it that way. Right now, when I walk out, my front yard, my backyard, because I sit on the hill on River Ridge Way, I can see the trees, I can kind of see the apartments. What's being proposed, I have a very distinct feeling that I'm going to come out and I'm going to be like, hi. You know, I'll be able, because we're talking 20-foot setback. That's about the same setback we have for our homes. So I'm just very concerned how it's going to affect myself and many of my neighbors that are here today. So I just wanted to say that I was opposed to this plan. I think, too, when we talk about low-income housing, I'm not sure why you can't take some of the existing units and convert them to low-income housing, if that's a real concern. It seems to me that that would be an option also. So thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Sheri. Casey Ryan, Brandon Goodell, and Joe Nicolai.
Hi, would it be okay if we...
Would it be okay if we threw the map back up of the plan, of the buildings?
Which one are you referring to?
Just the overhead showing the buildings on American River Canyon, the proposed apartment buildings. I just wanted to show something really quick, based on...
Tell me...
Something like this? No, just the overhead. I think it's that one.
Does that work?
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. That'll work. Okay. Thank you. So a lot of the things I was gonna mention have been stated already, obviously. So I was just gonna focus on a couple of specific things. I also live on River Ridge Way, actually right across the street from the last... Whoops. There it is. So River Ridge is right here, and this is Building Four, that I believe Mr. Brewer had mentioned earlier, that would go from ten to twenty feet above street level, I believe he said, Building Four would. So my house, as well as my neighbors that just spoke, my house is right here, my neighbor's house is right there, and some of our other neighbors are here also. So we have a direct view of that. I believe Mr. Brewer also said the existing trees block, would block that view. That is not true at all. If you stand there and look across the street, there's no way the existing trees would block that view. Also, one thing that wasn't taken...
I think in his defense, I think Mr. Brewer added that they're adding...
They are adding trees, I believe, but he also said the existing trees would block the view, and they won't. So the other thing that isn't taken into account, if you look at River Ridge Way, it isn't flat. This River Ridge Way goes uphill. It gains elevation. And my neighbor that just spoke, I believe her house on the corner here, it sits about twenty feet above American River Canyon Drive. As well as everyone on that north side of the street, their houses are all elevated. So they're actually looking down on it. So it's not like it's at street level at all. So that wasn't taken into account in his presentation either.
Actually, if they're twenty feet above, they're gonna be looking down on it, so they're gonna see less of it than someone standing on the sidewalk.
No. That's not true. You could go visit.
You know, just for the record, I'm very familiar with the neighborhood. I've lived in Folsom for thirty-five years, so I know all these streets. I have probably fifty friends that live in that neighborhood.
Okay. I still don't know how...
I'm there a lot.
I just don't know how being elevated on that side would decrease your view of the apartment complex. That doesn't make sense.
Basically, if you're standing in your own backyard, you're looking out over the top of it.
No, you're looking down on it.
Okay. Anyway, we don't need to...
Okay, all right. So anyway, so I just wanted to point that out. The other thing I wanted to point out was, and I just don't see how, right now, my view from my yard and my back deck is mainly of trees. I'm on the other side. Going from that to apartment buildings, I do not know how that would not affect my housing prices over time. I just don't understand that statement at all. The other thing about...
Casey, how long have you been there?
How long have I been there? Four years.
Okay.
Also, on the traffic side of things, I noticed when Mr. Brewer spoke, he said, or earlier when the presentation, there were twelve intersection studies. I believe it was American River Canyon and Oak only, right? Those twelve intersections, those were on those two streets? Is that correct?
I don't know. We'll have to get him to answer that question.
So I just, when you look at my main routes out of mine, where I, when I go to work and go to like East Bidwell for retail, my route is either Auburn-Folsom or going through downtown and through on Riley and onto East Bidwell. We know what a mess that is around Sutter Middle School. And someone mentioned earlier that, what is it, Bidwell Point Apartments? That's a hundred apartments on that corner. And we've all been down that road, and it's consistently gridlocked. I can't imagine what it's gonna be like now that those hundred apartments are gonna be placed right on that corner, and now we're talking about adding this. So I think that should be taken into account also, these other intersections, not just the ones directly around us. I also noticed in the report online, the initial report, it stated the proposed project is consistent with the 2035 General Plan Use Policy LU 1.1.12, infill development, which encourages fill development in key parcels north of US Highway 50, and contributes to the overall goal to retain and enhance Folsom's quality of life, unique identity, and sense of community. I don't know how that could, how this apartment complex does any of that. That doesn't make, that makes no sense to me. And I don't know how voting yes on this would do any of those things.
Okay. Are you about ready to wrap up?
I am ready. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Casey. Brandon Goodell, Joe Nicolai, and I apologize, it's just I'm having a hard time reading your last name, and Arvin Singal.
Hello. Brandon Goodell, I live right around the corner from Casey, and I want a second one. He said about the trees. I completely agree. So I, my grandfather was a guard at Folsom Prison. My father graduated Folsom High in 1950. All throughout my upbringing, I wanted to live in Folsom. I was very lucky to make the change from Orange Vale to American River Canyon in 2016 to improve the quality of life for me and my family, and enjoy the many benefits of Folsom living. We chose American River Canyon due to the larger lots, open spaces, proximity to nature, and the distance from the hustle and bustle of Maine Folsom. We were excited that this mature neighborhood was built out, that we wouldn't have to deal with the major construction, road expansion, and all the chains that comes with developing areas. We've enjoyed the balance that this neighborhood brings and decided to raise our children here, two and four, possibly calling this our forever home. Filled with the construction of a modern three-story apartment building, buildings, is a slippery slope for American River Canyon, like everyone else has basically said. Paves the way to build out every open square inch of land in the neighborhood and surrounding. Growth for the sake of growth. I had a ton of concerns, but they've been addressed by everyone else. Sadly, if these apartments are built out, we've decided as a family that we're gonna either convert our house to rental property, or just sell and move to a mature neighborhood in Placer County or Eldorado County. So please, vote no. Thank you.
Thanks. Joe, then Arvind, then James Crump.
Hi. I've lived here since 1996 with my wife and my family, and I've really enjoyed living in Folsom. And, you know, I definitely wanna say ditto, ditto, ditto to everything everybody's saying about the impact, but if I took care of my property, my house in American River Canyon, the way they take care of their apartment building in American River Canyon, I would be kicked out. Okay? So they've submitted you a traffic study and an impact report, saying that our property values are gonna go up, traffic is gonna decrease, and you believe them? This is like crazy. Okay? They aren't taking care of their current property right now. What I would ask you to do is ask them, hey, I know they're gonna make improvements. Paint and siding and new gutters is not really improvements. Their apartments are not properly maintained right now. They don't look good. They don't look nice, and they're not well-maintained. And I think everybody's gonna agree with that. So why should we trust them with a traffic study, with a housing study, with all this other stuff, when they're not taking care of their current property right now? They've been there since 2007. Yes?
2003.
2003. Well, what improvements have you made since 2003? Like dollars and cents?
They're gonna answer at the end. You're gonna get your three minutes, and they'll...
Okay. Well, I don't see very many improvements, and I don't think anybody else does either.
And I'm sorry, you've been here since 2016?
No, no. 1996.
Okay.
Yeah. No. So anyway, that's about all I wanna say, and just vote no. And then just also, a lot of the impact reports, on the traffic impact reports, I hear people talking about Oak Avenue. All the traffic is gonna be going out on American River Canyon, not Oak Avenue. So you're, I mean, I get it that Oak Avenue's gonna be affected, but so is American River Canyon gonna be affected more. Also, where are these people gonna shop at? Is there gonna be more busing coming in there? What's gonna happen with all this? Because it's not ninety-six homes or ninety-six apartments. It's gonna be like, three hundred people are gonna be coming in there. That's a big impact in that area. So just tell the truth. Stop lying, and it looks like you already made up your mind, Mayor.
Thank you so much for your comments. Arvin Singal, James Crump, Lauren Fraser.
Good afternoon, or good evening, council members. Jim, I'm Jim Crump, and I have lived in Folsom since October eighty-six. I chose Folsom because it was small, a lot of good people, good housing. You, ladies and gentlemen, represent us. We voted you in. If you support this, we're gonna vote you out of office. We don't want this in American River Canyon. We don't need it. I would like for each one of you to explain if you support this, why do you think it will benefit those of us that live in American River Canyon? How would it benefit us? And then I would like for you to address how them building these apartments are gonna benefit the city of Folsom. You've got a mess on Riley and East Bidwell right now. You need to be trying to solve that problem with the traffic. So please, get with the program. We voted you in. We will vote you out if you vote for this. Thank you.
Is Arvin Singal here? Arvind, are you still here? Arvind? Okay. Lauren Fraser, Bob Holderness, Mark Fein.
Hi. My name is Lauren Fraser. I just wanna echo things, many of the things that other people have said, but I also wanted to just talk about this is an incredibly distinctive road. There are a lot of people who walk on it every day. People come from other neighborhoods to walk on this road. They park, and they walk up and down. It's really accessible to older people. There's a sidewalk there, and, you know, Lake Natoma is nearby, and I love Lake Natoma, but it's not really convenient for walkers. There are a lot of bikes, and they whiz by, and you're older, and this is just, I've lived in a lot of different places, and I have never lived in a place that had a road like this, ever. And I've lived in a lot, in some good places, the longest in Folsom. I just don't understand any reason why this is good. They talk about affordable housing. I am in favor of affordable housing. I have a brother in the East Coast who lives in subsidized housing, and it's been lifesaving for him. This isn't affordable. It looks to me like twelve thirty-eight is the price for, if you make thirty-three thousand dollars. That's forty-five percent of your income. That's not affordable. When I went onto Zillow, there are tons of apartments available. The least expensive was at Canyon Terrace, and the price was eleven seventy-three for a one-bedroom, which is less than what they're saying those seven apartments are going to be. So it sounds like really rents are just gonna be going up there. They're not going down. There are only three apartments that are for seven hundred and thirty-six dollars. I just don't, this is just a reason to have apartments there. It's not making any sort of difference in affordable housing. If you want more affordable housing in Folsom, I'm in favor of that, but don't destroy this really landmark of Folsom. It's the reason I moved here. The reason I moved out of my last neighborhood is because there are no mature trees. There is no place to walk. There is no place for jogging. They say they're, you know, everybody right now is predicting a recession for 2020. Not everybody, but many people. What's gonna happen if they're spending millions of dollars on this, and then the bottom goes out? Then what happens when they don't get their rents? I just have not heard one reasonable rationale for doing this, really not one. And I really would like to hear, if you're in support of this, what is your reason? Because I, you know, I like to have a rational discussion, and I don't see any reason that this is okay. It's not providing more housing. There's tons of apartment housing. They're doing specials to get people to move in. As the other person said, there are eight available in the Canyon Terrace right now. There's fifteen at the ranch. There's twenty-five at the Falls on Creekside. There's a lot, a lot of available housing, and they're all more expensive than what Canyon Terrace is now. And Canyon Terrace rents are gonna go up to what they are once they've done this.
Thank you. Bob Holderness, Mark Fein, Nancy Detmers.
Mayor Howell and members, Robert G. Holderness, resident of Oak Rock Circle in American River Canyon. Mayor, I've been a resident of Folsom thirty-nine years this last Fourth of July. I've lived in American River Canyon for twelve years with my wife, Donna, and I've lived on Oak Rock Circle just over two months. I bought a new custom, not new, but new to me, custom home there just a couple months back. I'm in favor of this project, unlike all of my neighbors, apparently, at least those who came tonight. And I'm happy to explain my reasoning, because I think it will help, at least to give a different perspective on this project. Number one, the city of Folsom, over many years, has done a good job of not building an apartment house ghetto in our town. We've distributed multifamily housing throughout the community. It's correct. You see multifamily housing going in off of Oak Avenue Parkway. You see it up in the Broadstone area. You see it in Empire Ranch area. The reason it's distributed that way is to avoid a ghetto. And we learned the hard way back in the eighties, when we had a mini ghetto down on Duco Way, and we had to put a police station in that apartment complex. We had to beg Mercy Housing to buy the entire set of houses and recast all of those apartments so that it would no longer be the drug den of Folsom. You have to continue to do that, and even though my neighbors aren't paid to consider these things, you are. There are only two hundred units in American River Canyon right now. There's another apartment project at Greenback and Folsom-Auburn Road that's called Folsom Ranch. I don't know exactly how many that has, probably three or maybe even four hundred units, but that's about all.
Actually, Bob, I added up all of the complexes that are everything on the north side of the river. Of the fifty-five hundred or so apartments that are either existing under construction or have already been approved, nine hundred and nineteen of them are on the north side of the river.
Okay, but many of those are on the east side of Folsom-Auburn Road as well. But my point is, there are not that many in this particular region, and that's on purpose. Moreover, it is not correct to say that American River Canyon is an exclusive custom home development, even though I own a custom home in Folsom. My wife owns a cluster home that is down by the Orange Vale Bridge. There are over a hundred cluster homes there. Those are similar to condominium, but not exactly the same. But they were built by Busey Gearing, who developed American River Canyon back in the late seventies and early eighties. Likewise, Harry Elliott built the Cascades Development, and that, too, is not a custom home. And I think the point of it is, and I know I'm running out of time, so I'll curb it here, the point of it is, is you gotta stick to your policies. We haven't heard substantive evidentiary reasons to oppose it, and the fact that somebody... I'm sorry. The fact that somebody doesn't like it, the fact that somebody doesn't like it, isn't a sufficient legal, political, or legitimate basis. Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks. Mark Fein, Nancy Detmers, Alfred Crichton.
Hello, Mayor, council. How's everybody tonight? So you mentioned that there's roughly five thousand apartments in...
the point of it is, is you gotta stick to your policies. We haven't heard substantive evidentiary reasons to oppose it, and, and the fact that somebody, I'm sorry, the fact that somebody doesn't like it, the fact that somebody doesn't like it, isn't a sufficient legal, political, or legitimate basis. Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks. Mark Fein, Nancy Detmers, Alfred Crichton.
Hello, Mayor, Council. How's everybody tonight? So, you mentioned that there's roughly 5,000 apartments in Sacramento that are currently here?
No, in the city of Folsom.
In the city of Folsom, and there's 900 on the north side?
Mm-hmm.
And so, how many residents are on, in the city of Folsom?
78,525.
And how many are on the north side?
I don't know that number off the top of my head.
It's less than 2,500. My point is, is there is a
I'm sure that's not correct, but go on.
Well, I did ask Sarah, hi Sarah, I emailed you, and I asked about that, and you said, "Well, yeah, that's interesting. I'd like to know the ratio to homes and apartment in your area." And, you know, that was back on June 22nd. You did not get back to me, which I know you're busy. But to me, the answer is, there's a lot more apartments on that north side. And I have a list, glad to submit that. This is just a Google search for apartments in Folsom, it's showing currently 15 different apartments. Five of them are on the north side. So, that's telling me that the proportion, the ratio of apartments to residential houses is not the same. This fill-in project is really a land money grab. This is not to help the people of Folsom, in my view. I just don't see that being, there's other things that I wanna bring, new things to the, to the meeting. I know somebody that works at Progressive Insurance, and they tell me that there is impact when you move in this many more people into the size of our community, that both our auto insurance and homeowner insurance will change. And I said, "Well, how can that, you know, really be in the, in just more people, more cars, more accidents?" Officers know this, and then also crime. I did some study on just what these people are doing with their apartments in 2003, and if you looked at either Yelp, or you look at apartment rent reviews, or if you look at Google Plus, the ratings on that particular facility is 1.9 stars or 2.5 stars. All the complaints are the same. They say that the, the places are in poor shape, the maintenance is terrible, they're flooding the roadways, there's people breaking into cars, they raise the rents all the time, and you need to take some time and look at those reviews. I do, I did print them out. I wasn't being impartial about, you know, pulling in certain ones or not, but to me, this, and I've lived here in American River Canyon for 20 years, and I could tell you honestly that they do not update those apartments. I have been in those apartments, and they are in rough shape. So, to me, as the council, the first thing I would do is, I want them to renovate the existing 200. Show us that they have good faith in making that a nice part of this canyon, and then I would be receptive to possibly modifying it and adding another. But what they're trying to do is say, "Hey, well, after 30 years, we're gonna do this and do that." I would not buy that. So, I'm not in favor of this, and I believe that this is just a money grab. I believe someone else said there's 8,000 apartments, and these, that's all these people that wanna do, is take an exist, they already own the land, let's just go ahead and pump more in. So, I see the whole other side of 50 being built out. I do drive around the city. I love the city, and I know you guys have an issue with affordable housing. That should've been addressed back when you were building out 20 years ago, and 15 years ago, and 10 years ago, so
Are you close to wrapping it up, please?
Close. But this canyon, when it was built out, we do not have a park in American River Canyon South. There's only one park in American River Canyon North, and, and we had two apartment complexes approved when they built this out 40 years ago. They have the Folsom Ranch, and you have these guys. And they, and the ratio of houses in our little community, if it's 1,500 houses, we have, you know, 700 apartments or 500 apartments, we, in our little community. So, for you guys to come back and wanting to build this out, to me, I think it's a tragedy. The last thing is, I see on Greenback, I think it's called the Folsom Family Apartments, that's on Greenback, just on the Orange Vale line, that, oh, it's Forest Woods. Are you familiar with Forest Woods Park?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so, I mean, to me, that, that just got put in, I don't remember seeing that happening, and there's been a lot of problems over in that area. Lastly, when it does come to the police reports, there's a lot of break-ins and issues going on currently at that place, and the biggest complaint online was that the management didn't do anything about it. So
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Detmers, Alfred Crichton, and Jeff and Kathy Garber, Gerbeth.
I'm here to say that I'm against this. I've been living in this, in my home for 22 years. Just like everybody else here, I moved here for the environment, and these apartments downhill are not visible right now. They're not because of how the landscape is, and the trees, and so forth, but I'm seeing these high-rise apartments going through town, and they're ugly. I'm not sure what the motivation is, because if you're saying that this basically adds 10 units of low-income housing, I mean, is that enough to destroy our property value? And then two, they said something about this district, it doesn't even benefit our school district. I think it was a
Actually, that, that, that property and much of American River Canyon is actually located in the San Juan School District.
Right, which does not impact our Folsom Cordova, it does not benefit our Folsom Cordova School District, right?
Much of American River Canyon is actually in San Juan School District. You have the option to attend
I think we're all Folsom Cordova
You have the, you have the option to attend Folsom schools.
I understand, but we are Folsom, right? This is Folsom. And wouldn't you want the benefit to go to Folsom?
Actually, Sarah, could you address that as our former school board representative?
I'm not understanding the question. What do you mean that the district
Well, I mean, the bene, their structure does not benefit the school district. It goes to San Juan.
You mean the impact fees?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, but I can assure you, Folsom Cordova would love to have that side of American River Canyon in the Folsom Cordova District.
But they don't.
They don't, no.
No, they don't.
But there is a standing
So, it doesn't benefit our schools either.
Well, there is a standing agreement that if you live in the San Juan District, but in the city of Folsom, and you want to go to a Folsom Cordova school, San Juan will automatically release you, and you can go to a Folsom Cordova school, and then Folsom Cordova would get the
I understand that. I'm talking about the cost benefit of this structure, this unit, to our school
The impact fees would go to San Juan, that is correct.
That's right. That's what I'm talking about, exactly. So, now, I'm talking, the next thing I wanna bring up is the widening to four lanes on Oak Avenue. You're basically creating a highway in our neighborhood. I know that there are homes, my friends own homes directly on Oak Avenue Parkway. I'm sure they're not gonna be happy about that. I know that we have the, the race, the
Calum, Calum, C I M.
C I M, thank you. The C I M goes through there. There are a lot of people that gather in that area. This is, you know, this is gonna be impacting our quality of life, and in addition to the prices of our homes, it's not just, you know, they're gonna, like everybody else is saying here, basically build, it's an LLC. They're gonna build and move on, and then what? We're left carrying the bag, and it's really not fair. I would urge you all to vote your conscience and do what's right for the Folsom families that live in this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Alfred Crichton, Jeff and Kathy Garber, and I apologize for not getting that right, and then Leesel and Jeff Collins.
Good evening. I'm Al Crichton. I've been living here for 35 years, and for 35, maybe 30 of those years, I've walked dogs up and down American River Canyon Drive. Sarah, I have to ask the same question you do. That's 705 trips per day, what percentage increase is that?
That was my question.
I would also like his chart up there to show me one survey that measures traffic from Oak to Greenback going down American River Canyon Drive, and where does that traffic originate?
I'm gonna ask those, and when we get to the end of the public comments, I'm gonna be asking those questions.
I wanna see that. He made the presentation. I wanna see that data.
We're taking, everybody's getting their three minutes now.
Have the data.
We're gonna have that presentation at the end of the public comments, so that they're aware of all the questions
So, if nobody asks a question, they could mislead everything, everybody?
I'm, we're going to have that question. It's written down on my piece of paper, and they will present that before they leave here tonight.
The, the chart that shows the number of apartments that are owing, if you will, by Folsom to the county, I mean, I see that chart.
I'm, that's on my list. It's the Reno numbers.
Why doesn't this come out initially? Why doesn't it come out when it should come out, when we're on the subject? This isn't a, a shell and pig game. This is present the facts and the data all in one shot. That's the way it's supposed to be done in a meeting. That is the rules of order. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Al. Jeff and Kathy, then Leesel and Jeff, and then Elam Steers.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. That's Jeff and Kathy Garbitt. We have been living in American River Canyon South for 26 years. We raised our family there. We'd like to retire there. This is the very kind of project that would change our mind about that, because we use that Parkway every day like most of these people, and if you haven't walked it yourself, I think you're not really in a position to vote for it one way or the other, 'cause we walk it every day, we live there every day. And if you walk from Oak Avenue Parkway to Greenback, that stretch is the only place where you can see the coast range from our neighborhood. People here in the neighborhood have alluded to this, these trees, we don't want a blockage of trees and buildings, and we wanna see all the way to the coast range as we can. That green stretch, we've gone there with our kids and watched sunsets many times. It's like our parks, so much we don't have a park. That is kinda, we interact with the apartment people. I feel bad for the apartment people. They're gonna lose that green space. They go out there and they picnic, they got their pets out there, they use that space, and now you're gonna put a building on it, and, and there will be nowhere from Oak Avenue Parkway to Greenback, you can see past 20 feet to the west. That is a very choice piece of real estate for us. The gentleman said that our property values have not been affected, but the reason they've been affected is the apartments are almost invisible now. They're down below the slope. We don't even notice them. We're two blocks away. They have not been terrible neighbors, because they're not, I walk by there every day, go down to the gym. The people coming in, enter that apartment complex, practically run me over. I have to stop every time and look three ways, because they do not care. Those people that have come out, they go in, 6, 90 more people, I, I, it's fear, it's, it's scary to walk past that apartment building. I do have to actually stop. I will actually stop 20 yards away and just say, "Okay, I'm waiting for that car. There's no way they're gonna yield to me. It's a dangerous spot for our neighborhood." Was there anything else that you wanted to add? This is just the biggest change I can think of that could possibly happen to our neighborhood. I've never been to a city council meeting, I've been, most of these people haven't either. This is the biggest deal that's ever happened in American River Canyon South, and I'd like to say, I'm guessing by show of hands, most people here in American River Canyon South, right?
Yeah.
And I'm guessing by show of hands, you're all opposed to this plan.
Yeah.
So, again, I don't know why we would do this, for whose benefit? Their benefit? Why would we benefit them? We don't need the apartments. We'd have plenty of capacity. It's gonna ruin this legacy neighborhood, and Mayor Holderness, with all due respect, if he's still here, he was Mr. Development, we all know that. Folsom became what it is because of all the development. We're not interested in that. We all moved here from somewhere else for quality of life, and this is gonna be a terrible, terrible, negative impact on the residents of this neighborhood. And as someone said earlier, we've gotten really activated about this issue. You will not hear the end of this if we don't, this vote doesn't go the right way. This is a very sensitive issue for this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff and Leesel Collins, then Elam Steers and Jim Lofgren.
Good evening. Thank you for your time and for listening to all who have spoken. We are a younger family in American River Canyon. We bought our home last year, and we moved up from LA, which we call Concrete Jungle, and we wanted to move to, I was flying every month, and I said to my husband, "Someday we're gonna live in Northern California," because there's a lot of property, green grass, it's just so much more beautiful, and fortunately, I was given the oppo, we were given the opportunity to do so. So, we initially moved to Eldorado Hills, and then we were setting our eyes to purchasing a home, and we chose Folsom over Eldorado Hills. And in order for us to save more money and put a bigger down payment on our future forever home, we decided to live in the neighborhood where we wanted to purchase, and so, we actually moved into the Canyon Terrace Apartments. So, we were there for a couple of years as we sacrificed, and we lived there with our two children. So, when we first entered the Canyon Terrace lobby, we thought it was beautiful, and then we saw the apartments. We were deceived and very disappointed, because when we moved into our apartment, you know, they did offer us a more updated apartment, and I said to my husband, "If we're gonna sacrifice and even live in an apartment, let's just get the cheapest apartment so we could save more, put a bigger down payment on our house." So, that's what we did. The white sink that we first moved into the apartment quickly faded away and showed its streaks, its cuts. The cabinets could not be more painted over. The carpet was terrible, the, it was just a really bad place, and now I see that they're trying to improve to impress the community that they want to change, but I'll tell you that, no, we, I was not happy with the condition of the apartment. They also promised that they would fix the basketball court for our children, and they did not, so all these promises were made. So, please, they're making renovations now to put a nice face, a nice picture, but I do not believe that this fits our community, and please vote no.
Okay, so, to go further, while we were there, the laundry room was continually broken into, and the laundry machines were broken into, so people were stealing the coins. The, there were homeless people, on one occasion that I, that I know of, that would come in and use the laundry facilities, and there, there were other incidences there as well. So, it wasn't, it wasn't really safe. I didn't feel comfortable with my kids there.
And we also have a friend that currently lives there. She's a senior lady, and if they're really concerned about affordable housing, they shouldn't increase her rent.
They're, when, when I suggested that they put security cameras up, I was told that they respect the privacy of their tenants, but you don't have to put security cameras up in their apartments. And so, that was one of the things, the two years that we were there, they raised the rent 26%. So, low, low amounts to begin with, and then they quickly escalate the amounts of rent.
So, fortunately, now we were able to purchase a home on Crow Canyon. Our desire is to do a full remodel, because our house really hasn't been touched much since 1983. We want to update the interior of our home, make it beautiful. Our neighbors have been helping us to re-landscape our home and beautifying our home, which we're thrilled. We love our neighbors, and, but at the same time, as we embark on pouring about over $100,000 into this home, we're wondering if our home value is going to decrease. So, this is giving us pause to pour money into our home.
Okay, if you guys could come wrap it up, you're like a minute and a half over now.
Okay, all right. That, it was just that, I don't see how, I also don't see how they can project that the home values won't be suffered if you're putting low income and you're going from low density to medium density. It doesn't make sense to me.
Please vote no.
Thank you. Elam Steers, Elam Steers, Jim Lofgren, and Paul Cass.
Hello, my name is Elham, and I actually lived in Canyon Terrace Apartments for two years as well. Let me tell you firsthand, they don't take care of their residents. They have said for years and years that they have said for years and years that they will renovate the clubhouse. They said they have tennis courts, but they failed to mention that the light doesn't work and they refuse to fix it. So you can't play past sundown. Oh, and the courts are so old that they're, they are cracking. So it's not even safe to play on in general. Those pictures they showed you earlier are so far from reality. The pool is so tiny and dirty that again, I couldn't imagine it being healthy to even put your foot in. This expansion will grow crime, speeding, DUIs and traffic, as others said before me. I don't understand why there is even talk about expanding when the current ones aren't even full and they clearly can't maintain the apartments as it is. I grew up in American River Canyon North since I was 10, so about 20 years now. And I told my husband since the day I met him that I only want to live in American River Canyon North one day and that it's my dream place to live and raise a family because it's a very prestigious area and a very good area to raise a family. Well, in the last year, we bought my dream home in American River Canyon North for $775,000. We worked very hard to purchase this home last year with the expectation that the value will go up and not be altered by some silly apartment expansion. Had I known about this expansion, honestly, it would have changed my mind about purchasing a home there. I am five months pregnant now and I'm happy to be able to live in a prestigious neighborhood to raise a family. We have a park in American River Canyon North, but American River Canyon South needs one too. They should use the land to build a park or is that not good, is that not a good idea because there's no profit there? As the gentleman earlier said, we started today with the pledges, pledge of allegiance. My husband served in the US Army and had two tours to Afghanistan. He is proud to have served our country and I'm sure he expects that you make the right decision today and have our side, not the moneymakers who only think of their pockets and their profits. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Lofgren, and then the last speaker is Paul Cass.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Jim Lofgren. I'm a resident of Folsom. I'm a parent with two young daughters that have moved away and I hope that they have an opportunity to come back to Folsom. I'm also a passionate advocate for housing. I currently work for the California Apartment Association and I speak in 21 counties before city councils, often in an environment like this where you have citizens who are very concerned about apartments being developed in, near their residential homes. And I understand their concerns. The arguments are very similar to what I hear in other locations. One of the nice things about the process here is that they provide ample input. And I see city councils make a lot of adoptions, changes to the plans, usually to the benefit of the community. A lot of concessions on the apartment management side. And I will say one thing about this particular firm. I'm hearing a lot of different comments. This, the Ezra Low Company, they buy and they own long-term. Their management company, First Point Management Group, by a national panel, was selected as the property management company of the region. I know firsthand that they pump a lot of money into training their staff. And I'm hearing the comments tonight, but this is not consistent with what the peers are seeing. I think that we have an exceptional company. If I was going to pick a company to come to Folsom, they're the ones. They're 18 minutes away. Their headquarters of First Point is in Rockland. I can attest in 20 years that I've been involved. They are a premier, top-notch firm. Okay, so let me just set that record straight. Regarding the need for housing, I use CoStar data. The need for housing in Folsom, as well as the state, is great. We have not built for the last 10 years. There's been a shortage of 100,000 units per year. Folsom is blessed. We are doing great. I'm going to tell you, the rest of the economy in California is not doing so great. 50% of the citizens aren't doing great. A lot of the people who are not here tonight are the renters who would benefit from either the small number of affordable housing units there and just the supply. We need to build more housing, single-family and multifamily. And as elected officials, you know that you are required to comply with the SAICOG allocation of regional, dealing with the regional housing needs assessment. I know that you've fallen short for the past decade and I had a talk with SAICOG today and with probably a 50 to 80% increase in the need of affordable. So it's great that there is an affordable component of this, but let me explain to who's going to be living there. Someone who teaches preschool or somebody that teaches, a teacher makes an average, makes an average of 14-
Let Mr. Lofgren speak, please.
Makes an average of $14 to $15 per hour. And that is where they will, they will qualify to live in that place. So the people that'll be living there, and I lived in apartments myself, I think a lot of people have. You know, I, you know, I understand the concerns, but I think that the things that you have to look at is you're dealing with a top-notch company that buys and renovates. And in this particular project, I do know that there is the, not only the additions, but there's also the improvements that are required, not only by themselves, but also by state law. So, you know, I think that you've got a tough decision. I think you have to look at another factor is we need to do our fair share. We don't live in an island and we don't, you know, we have, if there's a need to get involved in the electoral process, you also need to look at the state level. Our current governor and the state legislature is clamping hard on, on, on community-
Please let the speaker speak.
Yeah. They're clamping down hard on communities that are not doing their fair share. This particular project is a great opportunity in that area, but we do have to look at other areas.
Jim, you need to wrap up. You're over. Thank you. Paul Cass.
You may know me. I've sent, yesterday had emailed to a lot of you with a draft of a lawsuit against the city. I sued the city 17 years ago when you attempted to put low-income housing around the same area. And the lawsuit was based principally back in May of 2002 at that time for increased traffic, noise, safety concerns, inadequate police concerns regarding the increase of the units. At that time, there was approximately 120 units that they wanted to put in. And now it's a little bit less, a little under 100 units. But the concerns that were there 17 years ago are even more now because the increase in traffic. When I drive on American River Canyon, drive every day before I go to my office, I see multiple groups of people walking their dogs or just walking together. I see that in the afternoon occasionally when I come back for lunch. I see that in the evenings, sometimes up to midnight. This corridor is not like most areas where you see the occasional bystander walking. A lot of these people use it daily. And my opinion is, and I think I can get a Superior Court judge in Sacramento County to agree with me, with my experts, is that the increased traffic, and unfortunately, you can't say not in my backyard. You have to have a reason.
Mr. Cass, please speak into the microphone.
Sorry, you can't say not in my backyard. You guys know that. Your council knows that. I know that. It was brought 17 years ago. But a legal right to stop this, if it was true, is the increased traffic, is the increase in noise, is the problem with school attendance and getting police activity and fire safety. So when I see, especially on American River Canyon Drive and the other areas in the, in the area up through American River Canyon North Development, and I live in the South, American River Canyon South, with my wife, Olga Nedilko, N-E-D-I-L-K-O, that's, I put that on there so I have standing to sue on behalf of my wife. The, I see this, that I see a, I see that in the very near future, after this development is constructed, that there likely will be accidents, there likely will be fatalities, especially of the pedestrians who live here. And I can also see extreme problems with, again, increased traffic means increased problems. So I believe that because of the traffic problems, which is legitimate reason that the council should not grant this, and because of the noise problems and the impro, the probability of having fire and safety because of the access roads that we have existing, which aren't like in Los Angeles where there have many venues for police and safety and fire to reach a home, to take care of a citizen. You don't have that here, not yet. So I understand the concerns that you have, that you have to, under certain state guidelines, find low-income housing or find some more housing for the area. But for this particular area, I think it would be improper and it would be a bad decision to vote this in. Maybe in the future, if you could table this, there might be a compromise. Compromise meaning instead of 98 units, maybe 45, something like that. But right now, the amount and the way that the plan is scheduled, I think that if I did, well, I will file a lawsuit if it's granted. There's no setback.
Mr. Cass, are you ready to summarize?
So, but to avoid a lawsuit and void litigation, I would ask that you take consideration of the population here that says it's not wise and valid choice to vote yes. I ask that you vote no.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody get any questions for staff? Do we want to take 10 minutes?
Please.
Okay, we will take a 10-minute recess. We'll come back and have-
Madam Mayor, if I may clarify, are we closing the public hearing?
Yes, we are closing the public hearing for the time being.
Thank you.
And we'll take 10 minutes. If everybody could walk it off and come back, that'd be Okay, if those of you that are still here could find a seat, I don't think my mic's on.
It's not.
It's good, you're back on.
Okay, if I could get people to take a seat and start to quiet down, that'd be Okay, I'm going to, to my colleagues here on the council. Mike, you said you had some questions. You want to start?
Oh, gosh. I have, I have a question and I apologize to everybody for not knowing the answer to this. And it's really for our Public Works Director and Community Planning. The intersection that's been mentioned a couple of times by the Strawberry Field with the double stop sign, that's not in Folsom, is it?
Correct. That's Sacramento County.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
That was your only question?
I have other questions, but I'm not sure that-
That's not right.
What's not right?
The Strawberry Fields are, is in Folsom.
The intersection with the doubled stop sign, those roads are not in Folsom. That intersection's not in Folsom.
That's not right.
A portion of Santa Juanita, the, that would be the easterly side of Santa Juanita from the center line to the east towards American River Canyon North is within the city of Folsom.
Okay.
The other side of the road is, that's the county city line.
On the south side of the-
Correct. And it extends directly south. So half, half of one of those stop sign intersections is in the city. The other half is in the county.
And, okay, all right, all right. Okay, timeout.
That's right.
Is, is there, is there some prospect of making that intersection a line or at least make sense? Because I have gone to, for track meets, I end up going to the high school down the road there and it's befuddled me.
That section of the boundary between Sacramento County and the city is one of many throughout the city that we have shared jurisdictions over a road. We are currently working with Sacramento County to address all of those areas and to either turn over our half to them or take over their half from them to maintain the intersection and the roadway itself. Another example that was brought up tonight is American River Canyon at Greenback. Those signals at Greenback and Madison both are maintained and operated by the county, as is half the roadway through that section. We are proposing to take over full operations and maintenance of those intersections.
Gotcha. Okay.
So that would, that would take our control of the signals up if you bear right on Greenback to that, whatever that first signal is?
It would up to Main. Correct.
Okay, up, all the way through the Main intersection or to the Main intersection?
To the Main intersection.
Okay, and then-
The city line is just shy of that. So that would remain within the county.
Okay, because the city limit is at that apartment complex that somebody mentioned earlier. And so what would that happen on the Madison side? Where would our jurisdiction or control of the signal end?
Yeah, I want to be clear that we're not taking over the roadway ownership, just the maintenance. The, we would maintain the signal at Greenback and Madison, as well as the signal at Greenback and American River Canyon.
Okay. So again, on that, on that same vein and through the Public Works Department, I asked the question earlier if we have the information. So I don't know if that was going to come from Steve or Dave. But when was the last time, what were the existing traffic counts along American River Canyon Drive with regard to the daily trips? Because we, the applicant and you both indicated that it was an increased total number of daily trips of 705 with 51 in the morning and 70 something in the afternoon.
That's correct. And the traffic engineer has that information for you and they can share that with you if you'd like to step to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Todd Tregenza. I'm with GHD. So today on, on American River Canyon, we didn't collect daily traffic counts, but observing traffic patterns in the area, it looks like they're about 10 times the PM peak hour volume. So my estimate, based on the PM peak hour volume at that segment, would be 3,200 daily vehicles. We have 320 in the PM peak hour.
Excuse me. Was his first comment, they didn't measure the data?
No.
You didn't measure it?
Okay.
Should I respond?
No, because we're not going to, we're not going to have an ongoing battle. So the, my question was, what are the existing counts on American River Canyon Drive? And your answer is 3,200?
3,200 just south of Oak.
South of Oak Avenue on American River Canyon Drive. So that count goes, I presume, all the way to Greenback?
And then down towards Greenback, you increase to about 41, 4,600 daily.
41 or 46?
We didn't collect Greenback. It was outside of our study section, study area.
So it was just on American River Canyon Drive?
Just south of Crow Canyon.
Okay.
It's at 4,100.
Okay.
And based on the land development patterns between Crow Canyon and Greenback, I would estimate at least a 500 trip increase on a daily basis.
Okay, from Crow Canyon to Greenback?
Yes, on American River.
Okay, so that's where you got the 4,600 number from?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and when was that count done?
May 11th, 2016.
Dave, do you know if our traffic engineer has done any other counts?
No, we don't have any current counts in that area. The, the most recent we had at the Greenback, American River Canyon intersection shows a southbound, which would be coming out of American River Canyon to Greenback in 2014 of 3,400. So-
So it's about the same.
It's about the same. It's about the same.
So I don't, again, on that same vein, so that was basically, that data is not superseded by any more recent traffic, broader traffic study? Because I know that we did one relatively recently, which is what's led to the work being done in Blue Ravine and some other locations.
We're currently in the process of updating all the, most of those are radar studies rather than ADTs.
They're radar studies?
Right.
Okay, so those are going to go into future speed surveys?
Correct.
Okay. And if there's any, I know I saw some folks from PD, only one I can still see. If Chief Hillman, and I don't know if you're going to have this answer, or if we can get it, but do we know when the last time we did increased enforcement along American River Canyon or Oak Avenue was?
Mayor, I also have a more recent traffic data at the intersection of Oak Avenue and American River Canyon.
Okay.
The southbound, which would be coming off of Oak Avenue onto American River Canyon, is 4,700, and that's in February of 2017.
So that's cars turning left from Oak Avenue onto American River Canyon Drive?
Correct.
That's 4,700, and that's daily trips, right?
Correct.
So that, that kind of coordinates with the 4,600 that we were talking about?
Right.
Okay. And what was the date on that one?
February 2017.
Okay. Okay.
I have a question too, for Dave while we're on this.
Okay.
So, a few residents mentioned this, and I noticed the same thing when I was walking along American River Canyon Drive. None of the stop signs have crosswalks. Is there a reason for that? And if not, is that something that we could install? Because I did look at the Folsom Cordova website, and there are a couple school bus stops along there.
That's not an easy answer. The, the issue is mostly site distance related, which is the reason there's stop signs there in the first place. A good example is at River Ridge, I think, believe it's River Ridge, right there. It's a three, it's a--
It's a weird stop sign, because it's a stop if you're coming down the hill.
Right. And the reason that stop sign was put in was to allow for that left turn movement into that street safely.
Right, but, but anywhere between Oak Avenue Parkway and Greenback, I didn't see any crosswalks.
There's not.
Okay. So I think maybe, and I'm not even sure that that should be the responsibility of the applicant. To me, that's kind of a city issue. So regardless of whether that happens, what happens here tonight, maybe that's something we could take a look at, because I am concerned about, you know, kids who are crossing the street to pick up a bus.
That is on our list, to actually look at a comprehensive study along American River Canyon.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Dave, do you have any idea when that's, when we're planning to get that done?
No.
I think, based on what we're hearing tonight, I think maybe we ought to move that up the ladder?
We can.
Get that done sooner?
We can.
So that we have answers to these questions. And frankly, I would request the same thing of PD, that we do some increased enforcement out there. And I suspect that what that will lead to is that we will find out who it is that's running stop signs, and who it is that's speeding, and whether or not it's the neighbors or people from outside the neighborhood. So I think that's all important information, regardless of what else happens here tonight. Mike, did you have any other traffic-related questions?
No, no other traffic-related questions, thank you.
Okay. With regard to the RENA numbers, can somebody put that chart up? and the RENA numbers. And just for the benefit of the audience, the RENA numbers actually mean the regional housing, regional housing needs allocation. And where those numbers come from is the state of California looks at what they are expecting for growth in any given region, and we end up getting our numbers, I think, through SECOC, which is the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. We don't have, the next RENA numbers are coming out 2020?
Yeah, we expect to have those sometime between August and October.
Okay. So that comes out every so often, and based on the anticipated growth region-wide, every jurisdiction gets an allocation of those anticipated housing needs. And this kind of goes back to what happened in about 2002. Who was here in 2002? Raise your hand. Okay, so you probably remember, the contentious would be an understatement, discussion about properties that would need to be rezoned in Folsom for multifamily housing in order to meet, not necessarily to meet the needs of construction of housing, because the city doesn't build houses, or apartments, or basically anything else except civic buildings. But we had an allocation, and we needed to know that we had adequate amount of land that was properly zoned in order to accommodate multifamily housing, should the private sector elect to build it. So that was what happened in the early 2000s, and that was actually what Mr. Cass was referring to when he sued the city. That had to do with a parcel on the north side of the river that, at the time, I don't know who that owner was, but when the discussion happened in this room, and was probably maybe the last time that we had this many or more people in the room, and this many or more people in several meetings that took place in the community center next door, and in a variety of other locations. There was significant pushback against zoning on a certain parcel. Mr. Cass filed a lawsuit, saying that you couldn't, you know, you couldn't possibly do that, while the state of California and the court system thought differently. Mr., Harry Elliott, at that point, the president of Elliott Homes, offered up a different parcel that could be rezoned to accommodate multifamily housing. Mr. Cass's lawsuit was dismissed with prejudice at that time, so the comment that he has a win against the city of Folsom is not accurate. But having said that, so these are the numbers, the, the most recent RENA numbers that we have have to do with the, 50%, number is very low for 50% of the median income, low is 80% of the median income, moderate is 80 to 20% of the median income, and above moderate is greater than 120% of the median income. So you can see the allocations, you can see the number of units that were actually built in the second column, and you can see the total number of units that remain based on the previous RENA allocations. So several people talked about, you know, why do we need to build apartments? Why do we need affordable units? And affordable, basically, is, are the low and very low units. So that's the explanation. These are the actual numbers. So whoever it was that made the comment that the city's doing great, no, we're not, and we expect that those numbers are going to be significantly higher when the new, when they do, when the new data comes out later this year. So I just wanted to explain that, and so everybody can see where we are. So to suggest that we have a preponderance of apartments, this includes all of the things that are under construction in other areas within the city of Folsom, across from the middle school, over by Costco. We're not going to be taking questions from the audience, so--
Not all vacancies, you mean, you mean--
It, it doesn't matter whether there are vacancies, or there are not vacancies. There's a significant housing shortage in the state of California. We don't get to dictate this. This is in accordance with state law. You have to have a certain amount of property available in order to accommodate affordable housing. On top of that, the state law has changed, so that when this particular apartment complex was built, was approved in 1985 and built in 1987, there were no, the, the maximum densities were very, very different than what they are today. This property was originally zoned multifamily, low density. If this project were to go forward, and that's the reason why we're having this conversation tonight, this project would require a change in the zoning from multifamily low density to multifamily medium density. The state law now requires that anybody that comes into Folsom that wants to build an apartment complex can go up to 30 units per acre. This, if this, if this expansion were to be allowed, they would be at 17 units per acre. So we, the city of Folsom no longer has the power, based on changes in state law, to disapprove a project that has less than 30 units per acre. So we are living in a different universe now than we were in 2002, when we had that, when we had that discussion before. So it doesn't, you can, you can, you can feel strongly about it, and we're not going to be yelling from the audience, you can feel strongly about it. We all felt strongly about it. I was sitting here in 2002, and I know the consternation that took place in every neighborhood throughout the city of Folsom. I was sitting here on this council when the apartments at the Preserve, which is at Flower and Blue Ravine, were being discussed, and I was personally lambasted for, you know, you wouldn't like it if it was in your neighborhood, well, actually, it is in my neighborhood. And, you know, it's unfortunate, but we don't get, we don't have the ultimate authority that I think a lot of people think that we do, to just say no. You know, no, there's a gate on Folsom Boulevard, and it closes behind the next moving van. We can't legally do that. We end up in court, sued by the state of California, we lose, and every taxpayer sitting in this room ends up paying for it. And at the end of the day, the developer that wants to build 30 units to the acre is going to get permission from the court system to build 30 units to the acre. So it's the unfortunate reality that we're living in.
Make us go to the law. Say, Joe, hurry, go forward.
Please, 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 let's be respectful.
Madam, may I have a question of the applicant?
Yes.
If a representative could come forward, Mr. Brewer. I'm just curious, is there any wiggle room in terms of the setback? I know they range from, let's just say, 20 to 70 feet. Would it be possible to push that back to 30 feet minimum, or?
There is Building 8, I believe, and maybe part of Building 4. I think Building 8 is the closest, and it's 20 feet, as I recall. And so, yes, we could certainly attempt to move that back. And there are, as I recall correctly, there are PUEs, public utility easements, that are in front of that building, and moving that back, I presume, would facilitate, would relieve some pressure, if you will, on those PUEs. So, yes.
Okay.
So the, the utility easements are in the existing parking lot? Or they're closer to the roadway?
Sid Paul, Sid Paul, representative of the applicant. Sorry, wrong microphone. The, behind all of those buildings, the driveway, should we put up the site plan? Yeah, this is fine. So, the driveway behind each of those buildings, especially Building 8 and Building 7, there's a public utility easement, and we accepted a condition of approval at the planning commission level that we would work with the water district to maintain their requirements in that public utility easement. So our ability to move Building 8 or Building 7 back is limited. We can certainly look at it, but it's important to recognize that, you know, it's, it's not infinite, the amount that that--
And with regard to that, that pipeline is, assuming it's San Juan Water District's pipeline?
Yeah.
Not the city of Folsom?
It's, yeah, it's San Juan Water District. And we accepted a condition of approval to, to work with them, you know, and relocate all our utilities and everything, so.
Are there utilities running through the Ring Road that's toward the west side of the property, that runs north-south there?
There, Scott, there are, this is our civil engineer--
Thanks.
Scott Robertson from GHD. There's utilities--
Yeah, so along, along the top of the map, as it's presented up there, the road that snakes through there, is there utilities in there that are--
Yes. My name is Scott Robertson. I'm a consultant with GHD. Throughout the entire Ring Road going around there, there's a public water, public, it's a San Juan water easement that runs through there. It's public water for this project. And as we, Sid noted, there's a transmission line easement through that same area. There are other--
That's San Juan's transmission main, or?
That's San Juan's transmission main, but the, the water that's coming off, I believe, is also San Juan, that goes through to meters all the homes. So there's easements that run through there, along with gas, sanitary sewer, et cetera. I believe those are private, the, as far as sanitary sewer goes.
Gotcha. What, what number of the existing units have already been renovated? Or, to whomever of the applicant can put a number on that?
I'm Darren Horning. I just got word, it looks like we have 30 of the 200 are completed.
Okay.
And we're doing, you know, probably five or 10 a month on normal turnover, and it's about $40,000 to $50,000 per unit.
Yes, so, so with respect for the complexity of what you have offered up as a solution to a desire to put some more buildings on this site, was there a consideration of doing buildings in the existing locations that were taller, added the units that you're seeking by kind of getting a twofer, and adding to the height, or replacing the building with something that was more, had more volume to it, so that you could get them, get more units on the site without getting into that front part or along the road?
Yeah, I believe we've maximized the--
(applause)
I believe we've maximized the back section, as you're talking about, the number of units we can get in there. We are removing some of the existing amenity buildings, and replacing them with larger amenity buildings, which is a benefit to the residents, gym, bigger pool, et cetera. And those are the, well, we showed earlier that.
Yeah, it only occurred to me in the, you know, in the context of this entire discussion, it seems as though the consensus is that the apartment complex as it is, doesn't seem to be bothering anybody, right?
That's right.
How, so, and the, you know, the natural slope of that site continues to drop off to the west. It seems like if we could find a way to probably take, and this, listen, I don't want to design this from the podium, but just, just for consideration, the buildings that are at either end, near the driveways at least, if we were able to infill between the buildings on the left side, north of where the new parking area is, or add some height to something, there's plenty of airspace over the existing buildings and over that west part of the site, in spite of the fact that the buildings, as you presented them, I don't really think they create that big of a barrier along the road. But in consideration of this whole discussion, it occurred to me that taller might be better. And we could make that accommodation relative to what the zoning ordinance says.
Is it a suggestion, again, we're just talking here--
I just, I'm asking if that was considered--
That potentially Building 4 and 8 lowering, or removing completely?
Well, I think it's a combination of things. I mean, clearly, there are people that are distressed by the proximity to the sidewalk, okay? In spite of the screening that's been provided, which, again, I feel is adequate. And I think, I think for, for those of you in the audience that have that concern, it is very difficult to imagine this unless you happen to be a design professional that deals with these kind of elevation changes all the time. So, you know, being, you know, 20 or 30 feet from the sidewalk, and knowing that your feet are at the finished floor of-- feet are at the finished floor of the third floor of one of those buildings, it's a little complex puzzle to sort in your head. And if there's a, you know, a mature tree there as well that's providing screening, and if the road across the street heads uphill, it creates all kinds of different types of vistas that might happen. So, I'm just thinking that, you know, at least the setback issue might be somewhat alleviated if, I think particularly Building 4, just to me seems like maybe one that could be mitigated a little bit. But again, I don't want to design this from up here. I just was asking the question of whether taller had been considered in the back part of the lot.
What are the heights of the back buildings, as he was asking, the new buildings in the back? Are they at max height now?
Yeah, they are over 20 feet already with, when you go to the peaks.
You're talking about the ones by the pool?
Yeah, yeah. Well, the newer buildings, can we bring up our presentation as the height?
Yeah, I guess what I'm suggesting is, I'm just asking if there was consideration, I don't know what the numbers are of the other buildings, but the building that's at the dead center of the site that's existing and going to remain, if it were somehow structurally improved or raised and rebuilt to be a four-story building, it still is even further lower than the buildings that have been proposed and might get the units that they're seeking.
They're hit sent to projector when you're ready.
I didn't consider that.
Yeah, it's a, you know, listen, I don't want to send this conversation off into Never-Neverland. I'm happy to cede the floor to other questions.
Ernie, did you have some questions?
So, you're looking at Building 4 and Building 8 here?
I'm asking specifically, what is the building that's at the dead, the two buildings that are at the dead center of the site that are going to remain?
Right here, like this guy right here.
Yeah.
These guys right here. Oh, yeah, these are two stories.
Do you guys have a pointer up there, so the audience knows which buildings we're talking about?
How does this pointer work?
Here, these guys right here. Can you see my pointer?
Yeah, nice.
That one and that one.
Okay.
Just if, if those were suddenly four stories tall, I'm pretty sure we would have a lot less contentious discussion here today. Just a suggestion for down the road.
Perspective of economics, we would have to, you know, it's not just adding the two stories, I can appreciate, I'm sure you can appreciate that as an architect.
I'm an architect, I get it, yeah.
And the engineer says you can't just add, you can't just add two stories to that, you'd have to rebuild them.
And no is a valid answer.
Yeah, you know, and I think we've said it several times, we're long-term owners, and so, we don't look at this in a vacuum, you know, we don't, we don't come in and say, "What can we do?" And, you know, "What can we do quickly?" We try to look at long-term value, so we consider how to improve the existing units as well, and that's what's going on right now. Certainly, from an economic feasibility perspective, if we were to take away an existing building and build new, I mean, there's, you know, the economic calculus of that, that you almost have to double what's there, right, to kind of make back what you've lost. You know, and we have thought that through, and it isn't as feasible as taking away intense water use.
Okay, but what if, what if you did that in conjunction with, basically substituting, making those interior buildings four stories, and Building 8 and Building 4 goes away? I don't know what the net, what the net does to you. And then the other question that I would ask is those two interior buildings? And this is basically similar to what was done at the Preserve when that project, when that project was approved in 1997. There are three-story buildings in that complex, and because the people whose houses are close to Flower Drive on the middle school side of Blue Ravine were concerned about the height and the massing of the buildings that were going to be across the street from them, the three-story buildings were all put in the center of the complex. The combination of two buildings, it looks like it's 12 units. They're both sixplexes, which are two of the smaller buildings that we're contemplating.
Okay.
So, if it were a loss of those two buildings, but we had entitlements for 12 additional units in the back that we could choose to do or not do, because it may not just be financially feasible, we could definitely look at that.
Or if it's reducing one level on both of those buildings, Building 4 and Building 8, that's six units, and then trying to accommodate those somewhere on the interior of the site.
Okay.
Recognizing that it's dropping the height down.
Right, so that basically, that basically puts those units below street level.
Correct. They would be, they would be a single story and then the garage below them.
Right, so it's still two-story, but my point being that if we went to those elevations looking across the street, you're basically?
Yeah, right there. That's Building 8, so you have that single story that's, you know, let's go to a, and this is Building 4, and, you know, you have that, the red line, basically.
Yeah, that's the view from the street?
Yeah. So, we would basically be reducing that top level on Building 4. So, let me see if I can mark this thing. So, this right here?
Yep.
That's three units. And then, let's go back to the other side. This is Building 8, and this is three units right here.
Okay.
So, I think from our perspective, to the extent feasible, we could look at adding those somewhere in the interior of the site, you know, and recognizing that, trying to minimize the visual impacts on the, from the street.
So, you're saying we limit Building 4 and 8 to the one-story over parking. We maintain those six entitlements or 12 for the two buildings that we would try to put someplace, because those buildings may not become feasible if it is three units, and the engineering it takes to do it. But if we preserve the entitlements to potentially those 12 units in the back, we would look at that.
I don't, I don't know if the engineering is the issue, you know, the question is, can they structurally stand another story? My guess is going to be no, and then the major cost is going to be construction, losing the use of the buildings for whatever time period and then rebuilding them.
Correct. And again, I don't know if there's adding two units to the end of a building or two works, you know, I have to.
Maybe it comes on, you know, these newer interior buildings that we have here.
Maybe we go four stories on those interior units there, because they haven't been built yet.
That are of no impact.
Yeah, because those are, and those are further down the hill.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, in an effort to focus the discussion, I'm going to make a motion, but I will accept some friendly amendments from the architect and the engineer, okay? So, I'm going to start with this.
This architect and engineer, or that architect and engineer?
Anybody.
Kidding.
So, I'm going to move to adopt Resolution Number 10309 with four added conditions. The applicant shall complete the recommended actions as outlined in the 2016 Arbrist Report for the trees that will remain, meaning if it says do some pruning, do the pruning. The second condition would that be that the color scheme be changed to blend with the existing neighborhood to the satisfaction of the community development department. I'm specifically looking for earth tones, no white, and I don't think the blue is appropriate here either. The third condition would be for the property owner to work with the commercial center to increase the walkability between the apartment complex and the commercial center. And the fourth condition would be for the property owner to work with the community development department to increase the minimum setback to 30 feet where possible, understanding that you have some restrictions with the water district. So, that is my motion. If I have a second, then I will.
I'll give a second so I can have my say.
I was going to let you have your say anyway, but thank you.
Okay. Well, first of all, I've got a lot of things to say that'll be different than what you just heard, okay? I want to give you a background on where I'm coming from, and you have to, what you see is what you're going to get, so if you don't understand what I'm saying, I'm sorry. Here's the 60 emails you sent me, and I read every one of them, okay? I feel what you feel in them emails, all right? I met with the developer, I went over there, and I have to admit, I came here in 1985. So, I was here when these apartments was built, and I lived in Pine Grove Way. I'm not American of a canyon, but I'm close enough that I always go up American to drive. I can say, when I went and met with the builders, the developers, it was the first time I was in the apartment. But it's not the first time I drove by those apartments. So, they were very insignificant to me even seeing them. I didn't see them, okay? I saw them when they asked me to come and talk to them in their apartments. So, I went in and had a very good discussion on the subject. We haven't had the staff report, nothing like that, the planning commission had, did their job. And I got, I was put into one of the apartments that they're renovating, and what they put in that apartment, I thought was great. They put washers and dryers in there, they put new cabinets in there, everything I heard that was falling apart. And a washer and dryer in apartments is pretty, pretty nice, rather than going to a washroom all the time tonight. So, that's a good point. But when I drove into that apartment, it struck me as different than anything I've been seeing around Folsom for these 30 years and I've been in the government. It was refreshing. It was, it was nice. It was roomy. I wasn't worried about driving down the street and hitting another car or something. I got the impression, I'll go back a few years, and I go back a few years anyways. But I thought, well, geez, the same, let's change this. Now, I talked to one of the planning commissioners today on that subject, and her definition was it was old. But not always is old bad, you know what I mean? Sometimes it's okay. So, I had a nice discussion, I saw, they treated me very well, very professional. But I didn't know everything when I came out. When I read your emails, I didn't know about the trees. The only discussion I had on the trees, you got two big pines right on that, I have to say another thing. When I drove in there, I looked at that green grass, and I thought it was absolutely beautiful, okay? I don't see those kind of things anywhere too many places in Folsom. I thought, no, that is impressive, okay? Then I saw the two big, I believe they're pine trees in there, okay, and that impresses me. I believe in keeping.
Talking about the trees that are on that slope?
Yes, right.
I think they're redwood trees, I think.
Well, they're big and beautiful. And then, and I asked about trees, they said you're going to keep all the trees on the roadway. I said, "That's a good, that's a good thing. It's good for shielding thing." Then I saw the email that said there was 122 trees that were going to be destroyed. Now, that was the first time that came to my attention, it was in the email. So, I called the lawyer up and said, "What's with these 122 trees?" It was described to me that, I guess it was, 54 trees were diseased, okay? And the rest would be trees that would have to go, but they were going to mitigate it with a whole bunch of trees, and I believe, all you remember my remark, taking a tree down for whatever reason is one thing, planting a tree, taking a big tree down and planting a small tree as soon as 10 years before you see anything that looks like the tree you just destroyed. And so, I said, "That, to me, is not mitigation to do something good long-range. It's mitigation for the, I guess you could say it's an excuse for taking 122 trees out, okay? Would you have destroyed the diseased tree anyways? No, you would not, okay? If you weren't doing the building and modification, you would not take those trees. You wouldn't even think about them, okay? Leave it alone, let them go." So, I tried thinking.
Ernie, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we need to, we need to see if we're going to get, we need a motion to waive the 10-30 rule.
That's okay, I know what she's saying. No, that's okay. She has, it's a requirement, so go ahead and do it.
I'll make a motion to waive the 10-30 rule.
Second.
Okay. Can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Aquino?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
And Hal?
Yes.
Okay, I'm back. So, anyways, that disturbed me, moving the grass, and I just don't like to see those things happen. So, there's two ways you go, and I was disappointed in some of your emails on what you described as affordable housing. The two people that live there, that came up here and talked, that's the people we're talking about for having space for affordable housing. We're not talking about crooks or gangsters or bad guys. We're not talking about homeless. People keep saying affordable housing is the same as homeless housing. It is not. It's young people, a lot of times, trying to get in a position to go up to upscale. That's who we're talking about. And Folsom doesn't have enough of that. Now, it's 1,500 or 12,000 or 1,200, is that affordable? I don't know. Maybe 600, 700 might be affordable. But anyways, affordable housing is not bad people. I want to make that clear, because I'm all for, many apartments we can build for affordable. I want to go a little bit off the curve a little bit. The apartments on, there's two types of where you go. You go like they're doing right now, they're coming into an existing thing, adding more and building and modifying everything, okay? Or you build one like across from the middle school, okay? That's 140 units. 100 are affordable, 40 are market rates, okay? Just to make it clear, that 100 is really going to make an impact, and as of today, there's 279 people waiting to get into those 100. So, you see, when you say we don't have a need, we do have a need, okay? A lot of people don't make a lot of money like we, maybe we do, okay? And we have to be cautious and passionate to look for that. So, I'm not knocking this, but this is the same thing. When they come in, and what they're probably doing, it's like building a new apartment. When you put that standing six up, and you put all those new buildings, when I looked at the staff report, all I saw was blocks, squares, and rectangles. That's all I saw. I thought that was the ugliest looking thing I've ever seen in my life, okay? Now, it's the eye of the holder. Mike is an architect, he's a professional architect, you heard him describe things, okay? Kerry's an engineer. I'm a layman, okay? I'm just like most of you, probably. I look at, you know, I love, I love my home, and it takes me time to get a home. I lived in the military for 33 years, I didn't have a home. When I retired, I came here and I got a home. So, I protect my home just like you are. I have no heartburn, which is how you feel, because I feel the same way at my home. And when they tell me they're going to put four lanes, I'm pretty far in. I'm in Pine Grove, but there's a lot of my neighbors that sit right on Oak Avenue, and that one lady said that she has friends over there. Wait till they hear that's an idea. I have a long discussion with the public works I will, because I did not, in the community, because I did not know that was even considered, okay? But we'll have a discussion later. Back to the point, do we really want to do this, okay? Do we really want to do it? Development comes in, you know, you can bring the development in. Say the word for me.
Gentrification.
Gentrification, okay? I have a hard time saying it, but gentrification, if you look at the definition, it comes in, a project comes in and it changes the lifestyle of where it is. You bring in different things, you destroy the culture that's there, and you build a new culture. And people that want to stay there, stay there for a while, but they leave too. Some people say they're going to move out. That's what gentrification is about. This is basically a form of that. And that's not intended to be there, but that's what, that's what we're looking at. So, I'm saying, do we really want to have such a massive, I know it's a bottom line. Now, we talk about renovating the current ones. I'm a layman, but I think that's pretty simple. How can you build new ones and leave the old ones not compatible? You can't do that. You've got to renovate the old ones and make it compatible with the new ones, and nobody's going to want to go into the old ones, okay? That just makes sense to me as a layman. So, all I'm saying is, I'm not convinced that we want to do this, okay? They're entitled. I'm not as cautious as the mayor is about being sued. What the hell? So, they sue us, okay? We may not lose. Some of the things, the state of California is coming out, is going to make communities no community. We're not going to have a community anywhere. We're going to be nothing but boxes where people are living in. That's all we're going to be. But we have to make a stand, and we have to maybe lose in court, and I think we have a good I think we have a good lawyer. We'll hold on to the court. Because we are trying to have a community. We are trying to have a society, okay? And if somebody's sitting in, in the big house there telling us that this is what we have to do, this is what, how many we have to build. At Reno, you look at them figures, they're almost impossible to meet. Anybody, any common sense, no, you can't meet them. That's why we haven't met them. If we, if we could meet them, Folsom is pretty good. We work hard at what we do. We would meet them, but we can't meet them. We don't dictate what, what they do when they come in development. They're good, good people, they're good developers. But they're not in there to do what Reno is telling us they had to do. So all I'm saying is, I spent a lot of time reading the stuff, a lot of time. I appreciate the efforts that I got in my meeting. It was very good, very cordial. I'm, I'm sorry. I, I'm not afraid to be sued if we say no tonight. I, if we, if we refer it back and the outreach that should have been, I don't take much merit in outreach in 2015, that's four years old. To me, I don't know what was discussed four years ago. And, and I, we've always had a problem in Folsom. We talked about this, the city manager, myself, and the community development department, about how we tell people what we're going to do. We haven't done a damn good job of that, I'm telling you. We put up small signs, we don't tell, we don't, we go what the state says, 300 feet. We should go as big as you are. If you have 600 people, we should tell you what we're gonna do. We don't do this. But they're gonna, they're gonna look at that because we just haven't did very good on that. So I say, if, my vote tonight would definitely be no, unless we go— Unless we go and, and my colleagues in, in the developer's work, some kind of, go back and take a look at some of the stuff that they're talking about. Maybe that will change your mind. It would not change my mind because I'm not a, I'm not, I'm not in that mood. But I, I just feel that sometimes when we, it's always too fast to something. One is to, to look at the regulations and look at the rules, and we have to have those or we have chaos. But, and then you gotta stop and look at the culture aspects of what do we do? So we make this a nice apartment, that do we ruin the culture of American River Canyon? Yeah, we probably would. And that's not worth adding to them. They, they can remodel the things to some degree. Another thing that worries me is they're, they're at low, low density. They're asking for zoning to monitor, to a middle, a medium density. But there's another density there. That's, that's what Kerry said, 32 a unit. That's high density. If they decide to sell that off in their businesses, they may, and that's their prerogative. The next guy comes in and says, now I want high density. Here we go again, okay? I'm sorry. I, I just, I just can't do it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah.
So I, I do want to thank you all for coming tonight and, and for all of your emails. I think it's really important that we be able to have, you know, respectful public discourse. We're gonna have, you know, different ideas and opinions, but this is part of the democratic process, so thank you for participating in it. And I'm sure all of you think that this is a very easy decision. But for those of us who sit up here—
I'm gonna ask once again, can we please let the council members speak?
For those of us who sit up here, yes, our job is to represent residents, not just residents of American River Canyon, but all the residents of Folsom. And, and I'm gonna take some exception to what my colleague said, and we are bound by our own municipal code, our general plan, state law. I mean, that's what makes it difficult. We have to take those things into consideration. I would say that of all the arguments that were raised by the residents, the one that resonates the most with me is, you know, the idea that you bought a home in what you consider to be an established neighborhood. And I appreciate that. I think there's a lot of validity to that. But I don't think that means nothing ever changes. You know, your maintenance association is slowly, I believe, replacing turf because it looks like you've got a lot of, you know, kind of water-wise landscaping that's happening now that I think looks beautiful. I have walked the parkway. And, you know, 20, 25 years ago, we couldn't have imagined a, a front yard without a lawn in it. But because environmental changes happen, we have to keep up with the times. Planning principles change. If you look at that commercial center today, it has way too much parking according to today's planning principles. So again, I appreciate the idea that you want the look and the feel of the neighborhood to remain. I think it will, but I don't think that means that things can never change. I do think the planning commission added some good conditions in terms of more screening, in terms of getting the applicant to contribute to the maintenance of the parkway, which I think is very fair. You know, I think we've added some more conditions today. You know, I, I think the white is too stark personally. I think the blue is out of place. So let's move to, you know, more earth tone colors, things that make those buildings recede into the landscape. And so that's why I put that condition on there. So, so I am going to support the project. But I, again, I thank you for participating in the process.
Mike, anything else?
We're in the site line.
Kerry, good. You have one more thing?
I'd like to—
Let's let Mike talk.
So, so I, I am of a common mind with Sarah on, with regard to the fact that it is important to retain the character of the neighborhood. But you can't live in a world where nothing ever, ever changes. And I think that it's unreasonable to, to think that way. We unfortunately live in, you know, sort of a situation where the, I guess, just some of my background, just, you know, I, I've, I've been the applicant for lots of projects over the years. And frequently, they were somewhat controversial because I did a lot of gas stations. And oftentimes, I would get the comment that, well, we don't want it there. Put it somewhere else. And unfortunately, the, the only thing that we can do, and the only thing that the planning commission could do, was deal with the discreet rules of planning the particular site that had an owner that was motivated to bring a project forward. So somewhere else is not an option in this case. And opening ourselves up to sort of the converse argument to the, you know, the, the suggestion by Mr. Cass that approving this somehow would open us up to a lawsuit, I think the other side of that is equally fair. That if, given the opportunity to meet our, at least in part, our Reno allocation, and given the opportunity to increase carefully the, the density of certain bits of our oatmeal here in Folsom, I think we open ourselves up to a challenge on that side of things also. So with regard to the project itself, I, I disagree with you that the blue and white's bad. If nothing ever got painted blue and white, you know, Vista Del Lago wouldn't have colors for their uniforms. The, but I, I think that, I think there's a lot of things about this plan that have been, in the context of adding more units to the complex, have been handled very sensitively by the design professionals that worked on this. I think the screening solution, I think the replacement of vegetation, I think the removal of some water-intensive vegetation's kind of a good thing. But I would like to suggest, as one amendment to the, the motion that's on the table, is that we give the, give the applicant the opportunity to retain the number of units, but with the planning staff, I don't know if it has to come back to us necessarily, try and find a interior part of the site to relocate the units that currently comprise Building Four and Building Eight. So I know that's kind of a little complicated and will create some consternation for the applicant, but I think, given, given the totality of this discussion, I think there is some compromise that could be had with regard to where those particular units are made up. So not shorten them, that's not what I'm suggesting. I'm suggesting either gang them together and putting them on an interior part of this property, or rebuilding one of the buildings on the interior to get those units in a different location.
Madam Mayor, if I may, just seek a quick clarification. Councilmember Kozlowski, are you suggesting that Buildings Four and Eight be eliminated?
I'm suggesting that they be not located in their current location and that the entitlement—
The units will still remain.
The entitlement of the units, I want to preserve.
Yes, sir.
I want to give the applicant an opportunity to relocate them to an interior site, which currently has got all the exist, the buildings that are to remain.
But Buildings Four and Eight would not be there?
Not in their current location.
Got it.
No, you're talking about relocating both entire buildings or relocating the upper level units?
I'm suggesting that those two buildings in their entirety. And it could, so those units, I mean, that is three up and three down, right? So it's 12 total. So a 12-unit building, you know, located somewhere in there, I'd be completely fine with that even if it were taller than the others on the site. I don't know that a third floor is useful to you guys in the same way that two floors would be, but I think that's a, it, it appears like there's the potential to, to do that. And I think it would, you know, potentially from a design standpoint, give an opportunity to sort of integrate the new with the old a little bit more continuously.
So I'm willing to accept a friendly amendment from our resident architect if, if the wording or whatever works for staff. Is that, do you need to give us some guidance there?
And, and my question, and, and Ernie had, had made a request to speak, but the way I'm reading this, that would, we would have to make a modification to the resolution because the resolution, the way I'm reading it, has two parts. One is the, one is the rezone from MLD to MMD. And separately, to approve design review. And I think that's where the modification needs to take place, but it's all in the same resolution.
But we will also incorporate the conditions as proposed by the council in the resolution.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that something we can manage without coming back there?
Absolutely, subject to, subject to the standards in the zoning code per, the council adopted zoning code for the RM district, which this site is located on, which means no more than four stories tall up to 50 feet.
Okay.
Okay, Ernie, you had some, another comment?
Yeah, I want to say, tonight, we were threatened that, you know, nobody will vote for us if we're gonna, you know, reelection, go for reelection. I want, well-known, my vote tonight is not based on that because I have already decided I had enough. At 17, at 17 months, I'm done. If you give me 36 years here, 33 in the military, I'm gonna take a rest.
So I'm pretty much in agreement with all of the previous comments that, that have been made. The, the way I'm looking at this is, we are looking at a maximum 15% increase over the course of the 24-hour time period in the, the daily trips, because that's a 24-hour clock. And the, the peak hour, the peak hour flows, the peak hour increases are less than that according to my calculations. I'm adamant that, you know, we need to look immediately at eliminating that problem at Baldwin Dam Road because whether this were to happen or not, that, that intersection in the morning and the afternoon is a nightmare. I don't, you know, fortunately, when I'm going into that neighborhood, I'm typically not doing it during morning and our afternoon commutes. It's middle of the day or in the evening. But it's, that stop sign is, to me, I don't know why it's been there for that long, given the, the relatively infrequent entrances or exits into Baldwin Dam Road. So I think we need to look at that. I think we need to look at, at doing that first because I think that may change what we're looking at for future work along Oak Avenue period, whether or not we need to widen that whole thing to four lanes, and how many turn lanes we need at the light at Oak Avenue in Folsom Auburn. So I'd like for those to be looked at very quickly. I'd like to see PD be doing some increased enforcement to get people to slow down and confirm who's actually doing the speeding. Because as we know, when we do this in other neighborhoods, 80%, and usually much higher than that, of the people that are running the stop signs or speeding are the people that live in the neighborhood. So, you know, that may mean that some of you folks are gonna get inconvenienced when they do that. But I'd like to get PD out there sooner rather than later to see where we stand on that. I already kind of made my comment about the Reno numbers. The water issue, that comes up every time anybody mentions, you know, even building a single-family home. And we've explained over and over and over that the city has adequate water supply. And I'm guessing that the elimination of this giant lawn area would be sufficient increase in water to supply much of the additional water need at the site. The trees, I believe that the addition of the, more trees along American River Canyon Drive and the, the big existing sycamore trees and the oleander remaining is, is a good thing. Many of those trees that will need to be removed are already in bad shape. And having unfortunately been in a situation to have to remove a really big oak tree in my own backyard to prevent it from falling on my neighbor's house at, you know, in, on a weekend as an emergency thing, I don't want to see anybody get hurt by a dead tree falling over. So whatever work needs to be done on those trees needs to get done sooner rather than later. And given that they're basically gonna increase by almost 200 trees, the amount of plantings at the site, I think that's a good thing. I had one of the planning commissioners call me this morning, and, and that planning commissioner shall remain nameless, but you'll know who I'm talking about when I, when I tell you that the planning commissioner asked that significant consideration be given to native trees to plant out there. So, you know, whatever consideration can be, can be given to that, and ideally, native trees that will grow faster rather than slower, including the possibility of getting some oaks out there, additional oaks where that, where that can be accommodated. So I know that everybody in this room is probably disappointed, but for, I've, I have and Ernie has been in this situation, and council members before me have been in this situation where nobody wants to see any kind of change, and they automatically just assume it's gonna lead to the downfall of society and ruining of their lifestyle. And that is not likely to be the case. And I'm sorry that you guys disagree with us, but you can wave your hands at me all you want, you can boo, you can do whatever, but, you know, we do have to abide by state laws. We have to abide—
Why are you here? Why are you here? Why are you here? Why are you here? I wonder why people hate politicians. What a bunch of crap this has been tonight.
Thank you for coming. With that, I'm gonna call the question.
Pam, are you, are you clear on the five conditions?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
So, anybody else? Any other comments?
Ernie, you're the only one with the bat phone.
Okay, so, Krista, if you could call the question, please.
Councilmember Aquino?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Sheldon?
No.
And Hal?
Yes.
Who remember this vote time?
Ernie, as always, you're a class act.
How? Time's up.
Anything good for Folsom?
Okay. We will now move into city manager reports.
Madam Mayor, if I may, one more item.
Oh, which one is that?
I think we have one other item, Kerry.
Yes, we do. We have Item 8A. We have Item 8A. Is the resolution of City Council authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement to the employment agreement with the city manager? Do we have any questions on that? Anybody have any questions or comments? Thank you.
Madam Mayor and member of the City Council, Stephen Wong, City Attorney. Before you tonight is a resolution pertaining to the city manager's employment agreement following one year and a successful performance review by the city council. And Kennedy, every term that's being proposed, which is just one term, for the proposed amendment is in the staff report, IM. And also, my good friend, Assistant City Manager Jim Francis are here to answer any questions you may have. are here to answer any questions you may have.
I'll make a motion. Sure, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 10311.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Aquino.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Hal.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, now we're on to city manager reports.
All right. The U.S. Environmental Protection Agency is hosting an informational community workshop from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. tomorrow, July 10th, about the planned cleanup activities at the Aerojet Area 40 site. You heard a presentation about that recently here at the council. This site is located east of and adjacent to Prairie City Road. The meeting will be held right next door at the Folsom Community Center at 52 Natoma Street. Folsom is gaining six new traffic signals along Empire Ranch Road, scheduled to operate later this month. The signals will further increase road safety for drivers, pedestrians, and cyclists, as well as allow emergency vehicle access for our new fire station located on Empire Ranch Road and Ritchie Street. And in support of the sixth annual community service day, the Rolling Hills Blue Star Moms are collecting items for overseas military troops. A one-day donation drive will be held this Friday from 4:00 to 7:00 at the Folsom Aquatic Center at 1200 Riley Street in Folsom. And that's all I have this evening.
Right. Well, first of all, I want to thank everybody that on the 4th of July, they brought the fireworks. I think it was successful for all the 12 or 13 booths that we had in town. I did talk to the fire chief, and there was no fires in town related to fireworks. We had a couple of fires, and they did a good job. We expected them to. They put it out. I did have an experience while I was sitting out there for 14 hours a day, watching the traffic goes down between Bidwell and Riley Street. And I got to the point that I couldn't take it no more, and I asked the city managers to send the police chief a request to put a couple officers down there. It's a speed trap. I mean, not trap, but it's a speed race, racetrack. I mean, I never, the motorcycles, motorcycles going there 50, 60, 70 mile an hour, how fast they could go. And thanks to the city manager and the...
Ernie, did you mean East Bidwell and Riley, or East Bidwell and Blue Ravine?
East Bidwell and, no, down Blue Ravine.
Was down Blue Ravine between East Bidwell and Riley was the stretch.
Okay.
I couldn't believe it. You could hear them all the way down there. If it wasn't them, if it was a car, and I think the chief has to take a look at the, those people that speed in the parking lot, okay? Speed down the road when they go out of the parking lot. It's just an example. And we saw all kinds of crazy drivers in the parking lot. And where do they go? They go down on Bidwell. And that's a scary road. That was a bad part of the 4th of July in the booth, how dangerous this town is becoming. And I think today is another example. When they drive too fast in a motorcycle, they can kill themselves. And we had one this morning. So all I'm saying is, everything was good. I believed, I didn't have a chance to see the road over. I wish them all the best. I'm sure they had a good time. So another year behind us.
I had the distinct pleasure to distribute cold beverages at the rodeo this past week on 4th of July, which was great fun. And then I attended with my wife and some friends.
That was distribution or sales of beverages?
Sales of adult beverages. It was good fun, but was had by all. And then I attended the rodeo again on Saturday with my wife, and it was a blast, just like always. So thank you to the chamber and everybody that worked so hard to put that on every year. Look forward to number 60 next year. And I don't have any other report.
Sarah?
I want to say thank you to city staff, particularly the community development department and Steve Banks for your work on this. You get to wake up and do it all again tomorrow, so that's your prize.
Yes, thanks to all the folks in community development. This has been a very, very difficult couple of months. And Ernie, I think you said there were 60 emails. I think there was way more than 60 emails. I know I got way more than 60.
I have them here.
I don't know if I, I've been getting 12 or 15 a day for a month.
You're the mayor.
So, anyway. And again, rodeo was a great time. I attended on Friday night, and I had the privilege of spending five and a half really long, extremely busy hours selling adult beverages on Saturday night. So they did a great job. My, you know, condolences to the motorcycle rider who broke his leg, but, and that is not the accident that I would expect to happen at a rodeo, but there you have it. And I also want to thank all of the public safety folks that replied to that, responded to that accident on Highway 50. I understand delicious luncheon was had by all of the people at Station 39 and Station 35, courtesy of the folks at Prairie City Landing. And I specifically, once again, want to call out Chief Rodriguez, who saved the executive director of Prairie City Landing, who's also a friend of mine, when his car was hit on Highway 50 and ended up down in a ravine, and nobody realized that he was there. And the chief had a feeling that there was a car down there, and he very, very likely saved that man's life. And I appreciate it, because he's a friend of mine, and I know that all of the residents at Prairie City Landing and all of the staff at Prairie City Landing appreciate the work that you specifically and all of your staff, as well as the police department that responded to that. Great work, and I hope the tacos were worth it. So. The usual traffic warnings, please drive carefully. I want to thank the police department in the last week, or two weeks since the last council meeting, maybe. I have seen lots and lots of people being pulled over, and it just warmed my heart to see that. So thank you guys for doing that. I haven't asked what it was they were doing, but I assume they were not driving responsibly. People are still running lights. I saw a woman in a Jeep today run the light on Whale's Drive to get into the aquatic center. I looked, and it's like, is it 5 after 5? No, it's 5 of 5. Can your children not wait, you know, a couple more minutes till you pick them up? You know, I don't understand why you would do that at that busy intersection, going into the aquatic center. So I'm seeing cars running lights all over the place. Please stop doing that. Somebody's going to get hurt. And the way the accident trend has been going, if you're the one who's speeding or running the light or running the stop sign lately, that's the person that gets hurt. So please don't do it, and, you know, we don't want the chief and the fire department and the police department to have to rescue anybody else in that kind of a serious event. So our next meeting is July 23rd, and with that, we are sneaking out of here at 10:59. We're adjourned.